Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening, welcome to the July 8, 2019 Board of Selectmen Meeting. We are going to go into executive session under Chapter, Mass. General R., Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Falmouth Police Sergeants NE PBA Local 61, and Falmouth Firefighters Union Local 1397. I declare not to go into executive session could prejudice the town in the future.
And we're going to return to open session?
Yes, at 7 o'clock. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Need a roll call.
They're doing it.
Got it. Thank you.
We all did it. It was proud to aye. Thank you. Good call, Sam. Good evening, we've just returned from executive session for the meeting of July 8, 2019. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and if you would join me in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hopefully, we have any proclamations tonight. How about for recognition, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize the beach lifeguards that reacted on Sunday to a man in distress at Chapacoyt Beach, and apparently had some sort of a cardiac event, and the three lifeguards that were involved were Rob Libertini, who's a fourth-year lifeguard, and Kelly O'Neil, who's a second year, and Owen Venturelli, who's a rookie this year. And Kelly O'Neil also helped last year with another rescue, and I guess she was the first initial responder on this one. So I guess it was pretty challenging, but the person is in ICU and recovering, thanks to their good work, so I appreciate that, and I hope sometime in the near future we can have these young people to come to our meeting and give them proper thanks.
Great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, yes?
I just want to recognize the Falmouth Fireworks Committee for organizing the whole fireworks event. It's such a popular one, not only for Falmouth residents, but for a lot of other people that come to town to join us for the celebration. And I also want to recognize the efforts of our police force that does such a good job of managing the traffic flow, because it is a huge challenge, and I think it actually goes pretty smoothly, and I know they keep tweaking, at least going back and reviewing things to see whether it needs to be tweaked, but my hat's off for all of these efforts by both the fireworks committee in organizing and bringing us to this great celebration, and for the police in helping to manage the impact of the crowds that come.
Absolutely. It was, I think, just particularly busy holiday. It seemed like there were more people here than we've had in a long time, so I know it's a challenge, so many events going on. Maybe something that we review, the number of events, because it's a really active holiday weekend, so. Great, great point, Mr. Patterson. Any other announcements?
I'm going to have Peter.
Good. Peter, do you want to make an announcement about?
Sure. So, we just met in executive session and discussed the firefighter union contract renewal bargaining, and we're very pleased to report that the town and the union have ratified a contract renewal agreement for fiscal years 1920 and '21. It was a substantial undertaking involving mediation with the Joint Labor Management Committee, but we did reach a negotiated agreement and thereby avoided an arbitration decision. And I want to thank the town manager and the Board of Selectmen, and the members of the firefighter executive team who bargained in good faith through some very challenging issues, and we got to an agreement that I think both parties are satisfied. They didn't get everything that they wanted, but it was an agreement in the best interest of the town.
Meaning, both sides didn't get everything that we wanted?
Both.
Which means it was a good...
Both sides didn't get everything that they wanted, but both sides agreed to it, meaning they felt they got the best that they could. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And for public comment, let me just read, public comment, it's for any matters that are not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Just make sure you introduce yourself, and certainly, we don't have any references to individuals, and we unfortunately at Public Comment can't respond back to you. So, with all of that being said, is there anyone here for public comment? This gentleman here, and then Betsy, and then Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Joseph Strazula. I sent an email to you, and I hope the other members of the board had a chance to see it. It's in reference to the recent changes at Chapacoyt Beach, or Chapacoyt Road, to the access of the beach.
I'm just going to stop you for one minute, sir, because it is on our agenda. We are going to talk about some...
Oh, all right, I did not know that.
Yes, and it might be, it doesn't say Chapacoyt, but it's an overall discussion around some parking and beach issues, and we do have Captain Reed here. So if you, if you don't mind staying, you can certainly get up and comment after that.
Is there a time for that?
It is. Let's see.
I would guess nine.
Maybe about nine o'clock.
Thank you, I'll...
Maybe eight-thirty.
Wait for that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry, only because, again, the rule is it can't be on our agenda, so. And then Betsy.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut in front of you. Mark Fineran, a couple of traffic issues I'd like to comment on. First, last year, we came with several neighbors from Trotting Park requesting no truck signs on the street because of the layout being so narrow, and the truck traffic was dangerous. And I'd like to thank the DPW and you people for taking care of that and posting the signs on the end of the street, as well as the engineering notifying the GPSs to stop sending the trucks down the road. And the neighbors can agree, that all agree, that it's much better. It could be a little better yet, but some people still violate it, but it's noticeably better. Thank you. And I'd like to speak about a traffic issue also, as a landowner in Falmouth Heights, and a member of the Falmouth Heights Neighborhood Association, Homeowners Association. A few years ago, I came here and I asked, when they were rebuilding the, doing the sewer and everything, if they could consider putting on the one-way streets two stop signs, one on the right and one on the left, because it's a real problem with tourists. Most of them are looking like this, and everywhere else, and they blow right through the stop sign. I can't be out in my mother's yard working and not see a car fly through at 40 miles an hour every 45 minutes. So I just, they did put them on Jericho Path. You can ask anyone in the neighborhood, it's noticeably different and much safer. They even put two coming up Worcester Court to where it divides into the park, and it's just, everything's better. But there still are none, no second sign on Grand Ave, it used to be Grand Ave North, and when you're going down Jericho Path, there's one missing where it meets Worcester Court. Oddly enough, they have two on the other side. And if you could just consider that, three more stop signs, it would increase the safety incredibly. Somebody's going to get hurt there, there's no doubt about it. And then, oddly enough, yesterday, on the same, kind of the same subject, I was approached by somebody who was part of a group that got on the agenda at the...
We're at two minutes mark. Can this fit somewhere else in some other agenda item?
No, I'll just bring it back, because it's already been through. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy.
Good evening, Betsy Gladfelter, Conservation Commission. I just want to bring you up to date on the Coonamassett River Project. I've given each of you the Phase Two partners. There probably will be a couple of more. It's getting crowded on the sign, but I can make the symbols a little smaller. First of all, I want to tell you the schedule of activities. Swift's Crossing, which will be the second boardwalk, it'll be just south of Middle Dam, will be, construction will be starting in a couple of weeks, and that is expected to be finished in the beginning of September. And I wasn't able to tell you about these dates until the funding was set, and the permits are all set, but all of that's done. So, we're going to be putting out a bid the end of July for Phase Two, which will include removal of Middle Dam, replacing the culvert at John Parker Road, and restoring the bog and river in middle and upper bogs. I just want to mention, thank many people for having, for making this happen. I think you can look at that list of partners and see that it's not only national, but also state and regional and local contributors to this. And the most recent two grants that we received, and Megan, Megan knows this one, because I was, I was holding it when I was bringing it to Frank's office, is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant Program, which is for ecological restoration and habitat management to increase resiliency. We also have funding from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is the U.S. Department of Interior Disaster Relief Appropriations Act. It's the very last of Hurricane Sandy money, and that will be added to money we received last year from the Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is for flood, watershed flood prevention operations. That's for the culvert. And NOAA funding, funding from Division of Ecological Restoration, and the final that I want to mention is community preservation funding for the boardwalk.
Thank you. And I know we'll hear back at another date. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Under summary of actions, we have approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Food Truck Festivals of America, Food Truck and Craft Beer Festival, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, Saturday, 8/10/2019. Is anyone here? Come on up. If you just want to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm the event producer. My name's Leslie Lakis, and this is the seventh year that we're coming to do this event. I don't know if anybody here has been there, but you'll be happy to know it's not on the Fourth of July weekend. It's August 10th. I brought some show and tell, some promotional posters that we've started to work on. It's already listed on our website, and we've been working on social media, letting people know. We've sold tickets already. Usually, it picks up and gets pretty heavy, like, about a week before.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
What's the website?
Foodtruckfestivalsofamerica.com.
Okay. I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. We have approved application for special one-day wine, oh, thank you, and malt liquor license, climate concert Woods Hole Research Center, 149 Woods Hole Road, Saturday, July 20th, 2019. Is anyone here for this event? Come right up, please.
I'm Dave McGlinchey. I'm the Director of Communications, Government Relations for the Woods Hole Research Center.
Welcome. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the event?
Sure. Yeah, we usually hold a kind of annual gala during the summer, but we're not holding it this year, so we thought we would have a more kind of inclusive event. We're going to have a concert with Brothers Ry, which is Woods Hole-based bluegrass band. We're expecting about 200 people. We're capping it at 200 people, but we're expecting to get that number. We have parking accounted for via ourselves and S.E.A., and we're going to have Parking Claw there, and Indy Firm Brewery from Plymouth selling beer.
Any questions for the applicant?
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Application for new entertainment and Sunday entertainment license for Bad Martha's Farmer Brewery located at 876 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Is anyone here for this application? I see two people approaching.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent Bad Martha Farmers Brewery, LLC, and they're the owners of 876 East Falmouth Highway. I'm joined tonight by Joshua Flanders, who is the GM of the new site. As you may recall, we were before this board last year seeking permission for a liquor license for the site, which is approved, and they are now in the process of completing construction on what I believe to be a very beautiful building and site that was developed there. They're set to open now in just a few short weeks. So we're here tonight to request an entertainment license. We're looking for the ability to have it any day of the week, essentially. They're not intending to have it every day of the week, but they want the ability to schedule as need be. This would likely be one to two musicians at any given time, a guitar, maybe a keyboard, something of that effect. This would be in the late afternoon, early evenings, and as I mentioned, it's not likely to be daily. The hours of operation are presently 12 to 9:00, and depending on the circumstances, the musicians may set up either inside or outside, but to the extent there was any outside setup, any amplification will be directed back towards the building itself on the patio, and it would all be limited to the patio area. I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have at this time.
Any questions?
Just, the license does say the music will be done by 6:00 p.m. every day.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, especially if we're setting up outside. Yep.
Yeah, for the, any live outdoor music will be concluded by 6:00 p.m.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion? Move approval, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We have approved application for new second-hand dealer license, Calico Collections, 94 East Falmouth Highway, which is going to be inside the Home Again Consignments, East Falmouth. Is the applicant present? Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lee Nguyen. That's my name I gave myself, my parents gave me Leona. And I am, I'm already renting a booth in Dee's Home Again, selling second-hand, you call it second-hand merchandise, I call it fine antiques. And I don't know what else...
Perfect. It looks like you've already done a lot of the steps that were required. I think we received information from the police department. Any questions for the applicant?
I just have one question. I think we've approved like four or five different...
From the same place?
In the same place.
Well, she's, she just, she used to have as her own shop, as a consignment, sometimes consignment, but she divided it up now into booths, and so she doesn't have to be there all the time.
Can you all fit in there?
Well, when the customers come in, it's a little crowded.
Yeah.
But we're not, we don't hang around too much. We just go in and make everything pretty and slip out again. And hope everybody comes and visits us.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Am I leaving now?
Yes, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're one of the lucky ones. Okay, under administrative orders, we have approved ever-source energy petition to install one four-inch conduit and one handhole 283/H5 on Cape Codder Road, east of Standish Avenue.
I move approval.
Do I need to, let me just ask this question. Do I need to read this public?
No.
No, okay, I didn't think so.
Recommendation from the engineering office is to approve it, so I...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, under letter B, we have execute discharge of mortgage, 12 Ambetts Avenue, Falmouth. Mr. Suso, or Mr. Johnson Staub, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This came from the town council's office, and is a recommendation that we move forward on this, and I bring it in that spirit. I don't have a whole lot more to report beyond that.
Okay. Any questions on this particular item?
No.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have vote to approve expenditure from the police donation account in the amount of $3,272 for lettering on the hidden in plain sight vehicle. I don't know if Captain Reed wants to speak to that, but this is something we've heard from Chief Dunn about in the past. He presented the hidden in plain sight educational vehicle that they're going to bring around to provide educational opportunities for parents and in the community, grandparents. This is to, I assume, put some lettering on it so that it's more easy to view what it is. Anybody have any questions about that?
I don't have really questions, but I have a comment. I think this is the only expense that we've incurred. They used, seized drug money to get it started, and then they had donations from vendors and carpeting and so forth, so that's a good job.
Good point.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Notice of naming requests, Marina F. Andrews Community Garden Memorial Boulder to be placed at Tony Andrews Farm. Per the naming policy, the board will consider action after July 8, 2020. Mr. Suso, do you just want to remind folks, or Mr. Johnson Staub, about our naming policy?
Certainly, happy to jump in. The board has an official naming policy for public places, and it provides that when a request comes in, there is a one-year waiting period for the board to assess appropriateness and act upon it following the expiration of the one-year period, and the board has followed that policy on multiple occasions here in the last few years.
Great, thank you. And I just have one question. Do we go back to the date when it was first requested, or do we start with today's date? I think it's when it's first requested.
That's our understanding, when it's first requested, and we have some paperwork on that.
On that, okay.
We just wanted to bring it to the board for your attention.
Thank you. I just know that some work was done to make it official so that that could start tolling. I know that staff here tried to encourage that, so.
My reading of the policy is we do have the option of not approving it going forward at this time. The only option, we can't approve it finally until a year goes by, but we could say, we're not even considering it at this point, and we, and not true. So, if we need a motion, I would move that we allow the timetable to start.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Going back to that date, I think it was the 28th, or whatever the date was in June. Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Approval, move to approve annual transfer of funds requests for snow and ice.
Madam Chair, this is something that was brought to the board annually at the end of the fiscal year regarding the snow and ice account, and we bring it once again from the Finance Director Jennifer Petit for the board's consideration, and I so recommend.
And that's the amount of $79,000, is that correct?
Yes.
To be transferred from snow and ice salary and wages to snow and ice expenses, is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions on that?
Still moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Usually, we don't have that luxury, do we?
No. No, this is, this year we do.
True. Mild winter, Mary, luck, continue.
Yes, knock on wood. Affirm letter of retirement requests for legislation for police department. Mr. Suso, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as the board's aware, approximately one year ago, we had an incident involving a shooting of two of our police officers, Officers De Miranda and Moore, and in the year that followed, those officers were involved in various levels of effort to return to regular service with the town. Unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, and reasons in different cases, including working with a number of medical professionals, neither one of these two officers is going to be returned to active duty. This letter, if affirmed by the Board of Selectmen, would petition the legislature for special legislation to allow retirement under the circumstances of this, you know, violent encounter, providing public safety for the town of Falmouth. We have worked with Representative, myself and Chief Dunn, Representative Viera in furtherance of this, and the governor's office, and the chief and I have sent letters of support for this as the appointing authority, but it would remain for the board to consider acting to affirm as well, if that would be your pleasure, and Chief Dunn and I certainly so recommend.
Any questions about this particular letter?
I have a question. I was under the impression previously that when an officer is injured and permanently unable to return to work, they do retire. Is that not the case?
It's not necessarily automatic, and it can take many months, and in some cases, years. It's not necessarily automatic, and it can take many months and in some cases, years. And part of the challenge that we encounter as a small to medium-sized department is it ties up a position that cannot be filled with an active-duty police officer. So at a time when we want to put as much manpower, available manpower on the streets for the chief to assign, this would allow the process to be expedited.
And just to that point, you know, sometimes that process is sort of fraught with disagreements between the officer and the town as to whether or not they are disabled and can't return to service. I mean, we are supporting these officers, and with the recognition that they did, they, you know, performed at the highest level during this event, have done the best that they can to ascertain whether or not they can come back into service, and have weighed that very heavily with the assistance of personnel at the police department, medical professionals, their families. So I think this is not just letting the legislature and the governor know that we support them, but really just making that statement that these individuals just deserve, you know, the highest level of support, and that they should have that hundred percent, you know, retirement, the benefit of that, because they've certainly given a significant amount to this community. So I think it's really just, you know, I know there's some pending legislation statewide to make this kind of the de facto thing that happens, but we're not there yet, so this is really required so that they don't have to necessarily go through that process of making the argument on their own.
I have one other question. If we do this, I had one person on the retirement board just comment that it was a little concerned that if we start retiring people at such a young age, and if this has, if this relates to other cases in the future, and we have more of this, then we may have to fund our retirement at a higher, higher amount. Does that sound reasonable? Is that a reasonable concern?
If I could, can I just speak to that maybe?
Certainly, please.
Because I know, I've heard the same comment. And I guess what I would say is that if, from my perspective, if we have these kind of events happening all the time, probably the least of our concerns is whether we have to fund our retirement, because these are so, this was such a particular event. And I know with that, with the legislation that's sort of out there, it's very specific to events that take place that are violent, you know, events that are pretty limited in scope, that it's not just anybody who's injured. It's not a blanket, anyone who's injured in the line of duty. It's very much about injured in a violent altercation while they're in the performance of their jobs. So I think it's a very narrow focus, which we hope won't be something that's common.
Right, okay, good, thanks.
And I don't know if there's anything else.
Well said. Yes, thank you.
Any, any other comments about the letter or?
I move that we send this letter as a board.
I would second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And great questions, Doug, because I know people have asked that same question, so thanks for bringing that up. We have another naming request, rename the Falmouth Community Play Space to Evans Inclusive Play Space and Park per naming policy. And with this, the board would consider action after July eighth, two thousand and twenty. I know that Kathleen is here. If there are any questions about this, I know she's here to give us another presentation. But any questions about this particular request from anyone? Did you want to speak about this particular issue? Oh, and it's seven thirty, so let me actually ask you to hold, because we have a hearing at seven thirty, unless there's. Do you want to speak to that, Kathleen?
I just wanted to ask a question. My concern with the Navy is.
Think you need a mic? Yeah.
I'll get you one.
Can we ever get a?
We do, we do have remote mics.
Just, I mean, not, but.
I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Yep.
Yep.
You're okay. I did it earlier. I already, I already did it.
Knock it down, I did.
I beat you to it earlier.
My only question about it is.
Introduce yourself, Kathleen.
I'm sorry, I'm Kathleen Haynes, chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities. And also, I don't know what you want to call, president of the Friends of the Falmouth of Evans Commu-, whatever. You know what I mean at this point. My only concern is that we have had to use Evans Inclusive Play Space and Park as a name for the Together We Can group, because we are now under their umbrella. We also need to use the name when we apply for our next CPC grant, which is not on the agenda what I asked for. I need your permission to file that grant in August. So we need also to incorporate in order to become the Friends of the, to continue fundraising. So that needs to be in place when we start that. So how do we reconcile a two thousand and twenty start date or whenever, however this works, that we're also using the name already for purposes as we need them? And there are exclusions under this naming policy, and I didn't know if this fit in, because it does say for fundraising, capital campaigns and things like that, the name could be, it could be excluded under those policies.
The timeline could be expedited.
Right.
So I just, I know we're going to start a hearing in a minute, but Peter, if you can just, Kathleen and I have talked about this, but if you could just weigh in maybe a little bit on that, and we may need to get some further follow-up on it.
Right, yeah.
Sure. So without at all intending to speak for the board in terms of what the decision might be, but there, it certainly is logistically feasible to have a nonprofit that has a name, a particular name. It could be Together We Can, it could be We Like Mice, you know, it could be, it could be Evans Playground. And that is a separate and distinct matter from what is the name of the park that you are formed to fundraise for and advocate for.
Okay.
Which is what you and I talked about.
Yes, that's what.
And likewise with a grant to CPC, the grant to CPC can say, we're applying for a grant for this parcel of land that's adjacent to the Emerald House and with the address. And it doesn't have to have an official name for you to submit an application or to raise funds for.
Okay. Just want to be clear on it, so we, there was no questions down the road.
It's a confusing policy sometimes, so thank you.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion? Doug, do you have a similar motion for this, that we don't vote it down?
I guess I just don't have any information to move forward, as I did with Marina Andrews.
Well, I've been attending these meetings, and Evan is a boy who's a, you know, handicapped kid, and he, he travels with his family often to New Bedford to go to a playground where he can ride on a swing. There's also one in Bourne, but it's kind of limited, I guess. And I think there's another one somewhere on the Cape, but the really nice one that they like is in New Bedford. We don't have a lot of these facilities. But so their son, their grandson and son, Evan, has been coming to these meetings, and he's a very inspirational kid. You know, he's always smiling, and he, you know, with all his troubles, he's still pretty positive. So I think he is inspirational, and that's the reason for the naming.
Is that your motion to allow this to go forward?
Yeah, I would move a motion to.
Again, for the timing to toll.
Yes.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you.
And just to clarify, Madam Chair, this is to allow the one-year process to begin?
Yes, the tolling to start.
Very good, thank you.
Great, we have a public hearing. Public hearing notice revised, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section two forty dash seven-seven Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, July eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, on the application of George and Lori Andrews for permission to construct a fixed pier that would extend approximately seventy feet beyond mean high water in the waters of Eel Pond, located at two twelve Edgewater Drive East. Area affected is Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's Office per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication date Friday, June twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, and Friday, June twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen, Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. We're here tonight to hopefully gain permission to reconstruct an existing pier ramped and float at this property at two twelve Edgewater Drive East. The applicant recently acquired the property, and during the title examination, they discovered that there was no chapter ninety-one license for the existing substandard dock. When we consulted with them, we advised them that they would need permission from both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen to proceed with the licensing. We advised them that the condition of that old dock did not meet any of today's environmental standards, and if we applied to the Conservation Commission, it would be problematic. I have to be careful what I say, because there's a few members in the audience tonight. So we advised them to apply for permission to rebuild the dock to today's standards, which includes making the dock a fixed structure elevated above the salt marsh, and also to provide public access beneath the fixed pier, and to eliminate the floats, which were in water shallow within the required water depth at low tide. And they took our advice. We applied to the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions allowing the dock to proceed to be constructed, which allows us to go to the next step, which is you folks. And if you approve the special permit, we would then apply for a chapter ninety-one license. So the dock, as I stated earlier, is to replace the substandard dock, convert it from a low-profile walkway with a ramp and floats to a fixed structure. If you look at the plan on the screen, specifically the profile at the bottom, I've superimposed both the proposed dock, which is the one that's higher, and it starts at a higher point on the coastal bank, with the lower-profile walkway and floats to just show the difference. The new walkway would provide the requisite clearance underneath for public access and separation from the salt marsh. It would then slope down to a lower level, but it would be entirely fixed, eliminating all of the other substandard parts. Its length remains the same, it doesn't go further out into the water body. The harbor master commented, it's a requirement that we get comments from the harbor master when we apply to the Conservation Commission, and he saw no issues with this change. Ironically, this board in nineteen ninety-one issued a special permit for the previous owner when they, I guess, started an amnesty licensing process, but they never went any further than getting the special permit. There's no evidence on the, in the title that they got a chapter ninety-one license. There's no evidence of any approval from Conservation. So we're hoping that you can approve this improved dock that's in the same alignment and length, but just better because it's all fixed and elevated above the wetland resources. We're hopeful you can issue a favorable decision. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any, Mr. Johnson?
In the diagrams, it looks like the pier is to the south, is about the same coming out, the neighbor's pier? Comes out about the same one? Yeah.
It might be slightly shorter, but it's effectively the same length, yes.
And what percentage across Eel Pond are we doing?
It's so wide, I didn't even do the calculation. It's much less than twenty-five percent.
And the access stairs, are they, it looks like they're below mean high water. Are they going down to water, or are they going down to the sand?
They're going down to the sand. They're land seaward of the salt marsh edge, just to be able to gain access. It's the only way to get down to the beach. If you'll notice, the dock itself is making use of the stairway that comes down from the top of the coastal bank. It'll actually be, it'll land right on the steps, which were the way down to the beach. But that access will be blocked by this dock, and it.
The steps will be underwater part-time.
These steps will be underwater at high tide, yes, which is, it will be part of the license application.
Any other questions from the board?
Number of boats? I saw that, I didn't see any special, any order of conditions as to how many boats were going to be allowed at this dock.
We applied for, and the family has two vessels, and we show on the dock two mooring fields so that they can continue to have the two vessels.
I guess I would be interested in putting order of conditions that not to have more than that, because it is a long fixed pier that certainly you could theoretically tie up more dock, more boats. But I, I know that in the conditions, it also talks about not being able to lease it or loan it, or in any way transfer use of it to anybody else. But that hasn't stopped other businesses or other people from doing that, as we had an issue last year. And so I guess I wouldn't mind having the order of conditions that they stay to the two that they have right now.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I agree with Doug. I think that, that's the expectation that's being presented, but I think we should limit it to exactly what we're looking at here.
And now just, you'll have to remind me, do we close here? No, we just ask public comment first, right?
Right, yeah.
So anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wants to speak against this application?
I move to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I guess I would make a motion to approve of the findings that the, this new dock is a considerable improvement over what was there before. The homeowner will have to go and get a ninety-one license, chapter ninety-one license. Note that also that the pier is not in any way affecting navigation and is in keeping with the pier's neighboring to it. But I would also like to add to the conditions that a maximum of two boats would be stored at this dock.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
We have another seven thirty hearing. Application for new all alcohol, thank you, common victor license, Blue Finns Falmouth Incorporated, DBA Blue Finns, located at two ninety-five Main Street, Falmouth. Let me just read the hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws as amended that Blue Finns Falmouth Incorporated, DBA Blue Finns, has applied for a new all alcohol common victor license to be exercised at two ninety-five Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, July eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven thirty on the above application. Publication date Friday, July twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, Falmouth Enterprise. Thank you. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Hello there, my name is Andy Baylor. I'm the owner of Blue Finns. Thank you to the board. Any questions you have?
You want to tell us a little bit about what this business is going to be and?
Okay, so Blue Finns, presently I have a, the same restaurant in Chatham, in the downtown, same kind of location. We're a fish house, basically sushi bar, hot kitchen, hot food items, with a upscale martini bar atmosphere. So it's a.
Trying to say all the right things that we like, aren't we?
Kind of like where we would like to go. So I've had my other restaurant in Chatham for five years now. And I also own a seafood market on the beach down in Chatham, also the Chatham Pier. And I've been in that fishing industry for about thirty-five years, so. My business is seafood. I've been selling fish overseas to Japan for a long time, and I love sushi bars. And this is how this all came about. And it's done very well, and I've been looking around, and Falmouth has not really had any locations. Something came up, so I've entered into a lease at two ninety-five, two ninety-one there, Main Street, right across from the library green there. And so we were, we're like, we're right now moving forward for permits. Do everything we need with the building department, everything else.
Great. Any questions from the board on this?
So how are you going to handle the liquor? Do you have TIP certified staff?
We have, we do a TIP, we'll do a, for all staff, we'll do, you know, a TIP certification. I'm TIP certified. My general manager, who works for me now, is TIP certified. Everybody has a lot of experience, and it's not going to be that kind of a place. It's going to be a high-end, it's mostly adult or family kind of a place.
Yep, Doug?
Will all the seating be indoors?
All the seating at this time will be indoors down the road. Will they let me put a couple waiting seats outside, something like that? There's really, there's, there's not going to be outdoor seating at this point in time.
Right, because we'd need some sort of a plan to see.
Yeah, we won't, I don't even want to go there right now. I mean, if you could put four seats down the road outside, but I think that'd be more trouble than not. Maybe just something for a waiting area. I don't, don't really need to approach that at this time.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess this would probably be a planning board question instead about parking. So you're going next to the Thai restaurant and across from, is this where, where In Boots used to be? Is this where you are?
Pardon me?
Exactly which storefront are you going into?
It's, used to be a pharmacy.
Okay, right.
It was a. Compounding pharmacy there. It's directly next to the Thai restaurant, correct?
Across the alley from where.
Beer and Boots, right, if that's what that is, E and B or something.
So I'm sure the planning board has asked about parking. It's going to be, because as we'll hear later today, parking downtown Falmouth is top already.
Yeah, so just something you want to consider? I'm sure you'll be considering a lot of things, but parking in our Main Street area is very. I'm sure you'll be considering a lot of things, but parking in our Main Street area is very congested.
I understand.
We're going to hear an update later about it, but, you know, it's just something to think about in terms of-
And then that's exactly what I deal with in Chatham, it's-
Yes, you guys have a similar-
Actually, we have less, I think, because there's no public parking. But because it's more of a dinner restaurant, then there, it frees up, there's more parking that frees up at night for dinner service rather than early day service.
Also to give you a heads up that your tying into the septic system is going to require variance because you're certainly going to be increasing the flow with this property over what was there before.
It's already been approved for sewer for eighty-nine seats, and a grease trap will be put in, so it already has its flow, it's been designated already.
I think, because, I think that maybe you had, maybe you had a limit because it was a compound center, is that what you said?
So, so was it previously, I thought I heard that it was previously a compounding center and not a food service?
It was previously a compounding center, but it has already been approved for sewerage for eighty-nine-seat restaurant, it does have certification from the town of Falmouth.
Okay, and-
Because I don't know if other people in the past wanted to do that, so the owner of the building, or whoever else it was, I had, I saw all the paperwork on the sewer that they approved.
So that approval was for this specific use?
Specifically for this use.
Okay, we'll, we'll need to look at that, it sounds like it needs variance.
So we have, just so you understand, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but we have, anyone that's connecting to our sewer system has to come in generally to get, you know, waiver to add to that daily load. So we'll just double check and make sure-
Right, and I have all that paperwork, you can, we can send that to you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wants to speak against? Any hearing none?
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion from anyone, or any further discussion?
A motion to approve this liquor license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Is this also common victor license we're approving right now?
I believe it is both, isn't it? Or is it just?
Because we have both in our packet.
Yes, and it's both, right.
My, the intent of my motion was both.
Okay, great.
I agree.
Okay, returning to the regular agenda, we have under reoccurring recommended special events, the annual neighborhood cookout, Bayside Drive Beach, Saturday, July twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Maritz?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
The year's gone by already. We're going to have our-
Will you just tell everyone at home who you are?
Ed Maritz, Twenty-three Atwater Drive and Seaco Shores. And it's just our annual cookout at the beach, hot dogs, burgers, soft drinks, expected sixty, sixty-five people. It's limited, the parking is limited, controlled by the seven spots that were allowed. And it's just a neighborhood activity.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good time.
Great.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. Okay, we have new recommended Blues and Views Concert Banshell at Marina Park, Wilmore, Wednesday, eight twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Good evening. How are you?
My name's Bill Mara, and this is a pilot project. I'd like to do a free concert on Wednesday nights in the summertime at the Banshell in Marine Park. And this is, this is to see if it's worth pursuing next year on a larger scale, like eight concerts through the summer. So it's, you know, a little bit of income for some local performers, free concert for the general public, and I don't have to travel as far to hear music as I do now.
Perfect. I know you supplied a bit, quite a bit of information for everyone to look at. I don't think that there were any objections from any of the departments that were contacted about it. Does anyone have any questions about this event?
I had two questions. One, you mentioned it was going to be a moneymaker for some of the artists.
It's, well, it's, we're doing it in partnership with the Falmouth Homeless Prevention Program. And it's going to be voluntary donations that they'll ask for during the concert.
And then that's the way the artists, the musicians will make some money out of it?
Well, this year I'm taking it out of my pocket.
So you're the only performer, or is this-
No, no. I don't have enough of these. No, I'm not the performer, I'm just the enthusiast. I can tap my feet, that's about it.
Thank you.
But the performer we have this year is a fellow by the name of Mark T. Small. He's an acoustic guitar player from, from, from the Swansea area. And, you know, blues is, he leads to the roots, the root side of blues, which is acoustic. And, you know, a lot of blues is electric, Chicago blues, Texas blues. So, you know, there would be some of that as well, if we continue it next year.
Great.
Thank you for the information. What will the time of the event?
Pardon me?
What time will the event?
Six thirty tonight.
Any other questions? Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have beach wedding ceremony, Tapakoid Beach, Parelli Dimitri, Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Anybody have any questions about this? I think it was approval by all the departments that were contacted.
And move approval?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We have seven forty-five, a little bit after report from Commission on Disabilities, and I think Peter, that Kathleen has a USB that she needs to have set up. I'm just going to do a sign variance while you're setting that up, Peter, because I know it'll take you a minute. Okay. We'll just skip ahead for a moment to sign variance, informational signage to prevent storage of private boats on town property, Conservation Department.
She has a PowerPoint on there.
Oh, you have a PowerPoint, okay.
You might want to go to the next one, number nine.
How about, we'll do the, how about we'll do the sign variance, Schumett Valley Neighborhood Association to place sign at the entrance of Club Valley Drive off Sandwich Road. I think we all took a look at, does anyone have any questions about it? Okay.
Of course. Thank you.
Any questions on this? I did, thank you.
I move approval of the sign variance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See?
Nice job.
Thank you, very convincing, thank you. I think we're still just waiting for a handheld microphone, so. Do you want to come on up and do the sign variance for Conservation while we wait?
Sure.
Thank you. Can you do it without the, um?
Yeah, I can do that with, um, I think you, I saw, you gave you all the packet. Here are the actual signs.
It's great.
So that's how large they are. Um, we already have them made up. They were, prototypes were given to us from Greg Berman at the Seagrant in the county, and Jennifer McKay, the Conservation Administrator. So there were just a couple of the parcels that have always been kind of like problem parcels with the storage of boats.
I want the mic around.
Sorry, storage of boats, so you have those parcels and recent pictures in your packets, and it's just to kind of discourage the, the storage of boats on salt marshes and the sensitive dunes.
Right, any questions about the signs?
So is this a, you know, the preliminary to some sort of an enforcement of that?
Yes. So then we'd go out, and if the boats are still on the marsh, we would work with the harbor master and the DPW to kind of then sticker, we have little violation stickers that we'll put on the boat, and before we have the town remove them.
And then where would be the alternate locations? When I looked at those pictures, I'm wondering where they-
I'll work with the DPW, I don't have an exact location yet. Those were just kind of public access points.
Right.
That, I figured I would start with those.
Because it seems like we might have to-
I mean, Great Bay Road, it's all up and down that whole stretch, that's a fairly large parcel.
Right.
So there's two points, what did I say, at the end of Brockton and Boston, and then at the end of one other road. Fenton Street, so, I'll start with those.
Right, I'm just wondering if we can kind of think of some alternatives for them rather than just say, you know, keep them off, because if, if there's no place to put them, what are they going to do?
Um, well, I mean, they'll have to store them in their yard, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, y- yes, it's less of a convenience, but so is, you know, massive coastal erosion, so.
Right.
Which, I mean, that's a problem. That's a problem, right. Specifically.
Killing the grass, right.
Yep.
How many boats do you think this is, how big a problem are we going to be creating by doing this? How many boats are we talking about?
I did not count them, Doug, I am sorry.
I guess, five, fifty, three hundred?
It's probably thirty or forty, I'd say at least, right?
On one parcel alone, yeah.
And what we're going to do for some of these boats, we're going to be saying they're never going to use their boat again, because if they don't, you know, saying they leave it on their lawn, if it's a sunfish, that means they're not going to, we have taken away their use of what they've done for years and years.
Plus, a lot of older people just can't move this stuff, so I'm thinking maybe an industrious young person might start a business of delivering. I mean, it does present a question for older people, it's hard enough to schlep things.
I'm thinking more in terms of maybe this, we might have to lend some help and create some racks, like we've done at-
And, and there are associations that have done that. I mean, we worked really closely with the Seaco Shores Association to develop, to help them permit dinghy racks. This is parcels that are under the care and control of the Board of Selectmen, so I, that's a decision I cannot make to install dinghy racks everywhere. But it's something the town may want to consider.
I think we should, if we're going to tell them to keep it off the grass, we got to give them an option.
Do we have regulations about this? I mean, are we enforcing a regulation or putting up signs about a regulation that doesn't exist?
Well, the, the-
Well, it's a-
You're destroying beach grass, that's violating the regulation.
The salt marsh is what I'm particularly concerned about, is the small, the salt marsh areas. If the boat's just on the beach, you know, we have a lot more, higher priorities than going after a dinghy that's on sand. I'm not saying that that's okay to store it on town property, but I'm just saying there are other areas where it is causing damage to the resource areas, which increases erosion.
Right.
So, it does sound like some of the concerns that are being raised, there needs to maybe be sort of an educational component, because it'll be definitely a cultural shift, right, for, for a lot of folks who have, you know, left it there, and maybe that's sort of the only viable option at present. Peter, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Jen, if you, if you know the regulation off the top of your head, I think the question was asked, I'm not sure if it was, if it was really answered. Is there a, you know, very clear regulation that we can point to that says this is the regulation you're violating by putting your boat in the beach grass?
Basically, it's alteration to salt marsh by smothering the vegetation. So, yes, I can specifically point to a regulation.
So we can certainly work on a, I mean, I think this is an important aspect of a communication plan, and we can discuss- Yeah, and we can discuss among staff, you know, what the opportunities might be, and they'll be different in different locations. Some locations will have associations that we can perhaps dialogue with about creating a rack. Others may not have an association, but that's certainly something that we can continue to work on.
I guess my concern is it may be a regulation that's been in the books, but these people, some of these people may have been doing this for fifty years, and for us to all of a sudden spell this regulation at them, I'm a little concerned about. I guess I, I would not want, I'd rather, instead of having the sign be the first step, I'd rather have stickers on the boats be the first step saying, we're really concerned about this, we're moving this direction, but to have the sign go up as the official statement, I would rather have a little bit more of an informal communication saying, we're going to be posting this, this is the regulation, these are some of your options. If you have an association, can contact the Conservation Commission. About racks, I'm just worried that all of a sudden putting up these signs is-
I feel differently, I feel like the signs are a good start, and I think the sticker is probably more of a, you know, it's almost like a ticket.
Depends what the sticker says.
Yeah.
It depends how friendly, it's still intrusive, you know, sticking it on their boat.
I mean, I think this is a better educational beginning.
Exactly. This educates them as to why, and if we wanted to, enforcement is the next step, okay, we can try to do that in a graceful way. But we've got to change people's patterns, you know, and if you've been doing it for fifty years, well, guess what? Now your impact is being raised, and you have to be aware of it. And so that's part of that educational process.
Jen, what do the stickers say? Do you have a general sticker?
We do have a general, it's a bright red sticker. We have stickered boats in the past with the help of the natural resource officers.
And does it say to contact Conservation, or does it, okay. So maybe we can just, I think you're hearing there's some, just some concern-
Oh, I understand.
About doing some education, and before we penalize to sort of do that education, because it's definitely a shift in probably what a lot of people think that even, you know, they can do.
I understand that, I just thought the signs were, I, I'm kind of thought the signs were a little educational, just kind of tried to discourage the practice at first.
I agree, and you'll probably get some results. People will probably say, oh geez, I didn't think of that, you know.
Any other thoughts or comments about it? Any motions?
I move approval to use these signs as an educational process to begin removing boats from the saltwater marshes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'll, I'll second, can I have one more question?
Yep.
How much time are we going to give people before we start really going to the next level, though? And how many signs do you think you plan to put up?
Well, I just identified the four parcels, like the, the two areas, the Great Bay, and then the two other parcels for right now. I'll be working with the Concom on some of the parcels that are under the care and control of the Concom for these signs. Right now, those are the only four that I'm really having.
Okay.
Great Bay just concerns me.
Right. And so, but the enforcement will be as, as needed later?
Needed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I had a, I had a motion and I had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, Kathleen, thanks for being patient, but that way you got your-
Hi, Kathleen Haines, Chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities for my annual report. I'd like to call your attention to this list, the first list. It's about twenty-something, maybe, items on it. These are items for repair of the sidewalks, curb cuts, roadways, and signs. Jim Grady and I went out, I think it was just before two thousand and seventeen, the season started, and we made this list. And I'd like to call your attention, everything that has an X has been done. This is a great, great thing, because on this list here, there's a page and a half, I think, of all X's, work that's been accomplished. And I really, Ray's here, Peter's here, I don't think Jim's here, or Jim McGlothlin, but you guys have done a great job getting this done, especially Jim Grady, who's really gone out of his way to do eighty-eight improvements for the town. And that's, that's really, really significant work. And the commission has worked with Jim, like, unbelievably. And we've, he's gotten this done. And there's just a few things that haven't been done, but a couple of these items will be done when the Sandwich Road to Oxbow is going to be done. There's a couple items on there, there's one item that, come to find out.
Can I ask you a question? Do you have this on the PowerPoint as well?
No, I didn't have time, it was like a late day.
All right, thanks.
But this is, this is just significant work that's been done. And it just amazes me, there's still things to be done, roots are still growing through trees, or, no.
Sidewalks.
The sidewalks, those are real, real pains for people. There's an area in front of Cedar Meadows that I know I've fallen in the street and got a concussion because tripping over the roots in the sidewalk. So there are some places that really, really need to be done, but like that area in Cedar Meadows would be corrected once the Oxbow to Sandwich Road section is completed. So my hat's off to you guys, really, really appreciate it. I'll get to that afterwards, I just want to go through some of the positives we've had. We have gotten the curb cuts done, we've got the trees removed and things like that, but there are areas where we haven't gotten things done, and that concerns the commission. And there, there are things that have been brought up, like the trucks on Trotting Park. Well, have you ever watched trucks go down Main Street? The eighteen-wheelers barreling down on a day when there's arts alive? They barrel down, they're like unbelievably. And the commission believes that it's a time when maybe deliveries should be done in the morning instead of all day long, and eighteen-wheelers maybe shouldn't be going down Main Street in the summer. That's a real, real, I mean, when you, I cross the sidewalk and somebody stops short to let me by, that's dangerous enough, but when a truck has to do it, and it's a big truck, add to the- that's dangerous enough, but when a truck has to do it and it's a big truck, add to the, they get the brakes on right or it's me. I have to have a concern for other disabled people, for people pushing baby carriages, for people trying to cross. And this also is a concern of where Rite Aid and Colonial Gas Station is. There's been fender benders there. People pull out of the gas station, they pull out of Rite Aid. There's two side, crosswalks right there between them. They don't stop. They don't stop for me, they don't stop for anybody. And there's people being pushed in wheelchairs across those sidewalks and curb cuts and crosswalks. And somebody's gonna get hurt. And I'm just calling it to attention, the commission really has a concern about that. But, um, what can be done, it's, it's in you guys' hands. Um, we just wanted to get clear that these are problems and I don't know if the average person notices it, but I know my mom and I went to the Arts Alive and she could not believe, sitting on the bench, that these eighteen-wheelers were barreling down Main Street. And I was just shocked that she would notice it because I notice these things. But did any of those people at the Arts Alive sitting on the green and the library lawn notice it when they try to cross the street, you know? Um, another thing that has been under great scrutiny, not scrutiny, but has been noticed by other towns is our volunteer parking patrol. Sergeant Ben Guthrie and the volunteer parking patrol, um, that two hundred dollars everybody is fined goes into the activity fund for the Commission on Disabilities. And we've able this year, not this year, we completed this year our donation to the Commodores for the vertical lift, um, some of the work on the vertical lift. It took us a while, but we got it pushed through. Um, this is one of the things we can do because of that two hundred dollars that goes into our kitty. And we have about thirty-two thousand dollars in that kitty that's been built up over the years. And as stewards of it, we don't like to just blow it. Um, we're very careful about how we use it and it's helped with the fair and other things. One of the things we did more success this year was our fair. We had almost thirty vendors, some of who are brand new to us, um, some bigger vendors such as Cape Cod Community Health Center. Um, it's been late off the top of my head. There were just so many this year. We had more people this year. This was our second year. Um, so we're growing, we're learning, we're doing these things. Um, but we have deficiencies too. We've had some slip-ups. We didn't get onto the twenty advisory committee. We were, but nobody was able to get there and be part of it. So, we dropped the ball there. Um, bicycle advisory committee, we have our differences. We feel that they don't have enough within them to help with the disabled community. So, we disagree with their name change and only because we don't feel bicycles and pedestrians and people in power wheelchairs in a crosswalk are the same. And that bicycle committees can't solve the problems for people in wheelchairs. In, in crosswalks, it's education because even I had a police officer behind a car that cut me off in a crosswalk. And when I went to the police station, I was told, oh, he maybe didn't see the same thing you did. So, they're not blind to it, but they're also not aware always because they've got eyes everywhere that this happens. And so, a bicycle committee isn't gonna solve this. Educating the public that they can't just blow through a crosswalk with somebody in it. I don't know where the education's gonna come from, but it's a necessity. Um, and, and in a town like ours, it's, it's even more because we have Fourth of July that we love. A lot of people in town, a lot of people in crosswalks, and it's not just the disabled. So, with that, I'm gonna show you some slides of the positives and negatives that we've done. Down with Law, we've been able to get three crosswalks put in. Eh, okay. This is one, you can barely see it, but this crosswalk is the fast side of the pub theater going to a Burger King. This wasn't there. People were complaining because there's a curb, was a curb cut to handicap bring up to the theater and nobody stopped when they went to get to their cars. So, the pub theater, the Wilder companies who own Down with Mall, put this one in. This one is the middle one, which was already there. And this one is on the fast side going to Walmart and she goes right to the parking. And it's a vast improvement and people, again, are safe in a, in a way. These are the papers at, uh, in front of Michael's in the new hair salon. They're all tripped and broken and we've been trying to get Matt Joyce, who's the property manager of Wilder, um, to do something. They've been telling us they're going to, but it hasn't happened. And one of the people who is vastly affected by it is Jane Perry, who is sight impaired and walking with pain in these broken trips has almost caused her to stumble. So, she has asked repeatedly that something be done about this. And they're working on it, but it's been a very slow process. It's been almost a three-year process. But this here, um, no, that's a different one. They did put, they did fix the sidewalk between Davis Streets and Walmart too, which is also a big improvement because it had big cracks. This is another great project that the engineers were able to maneuver. This is the new walkway to the playground at North Towne's School. Oh, it's out of place, sorry. But this is, this is another view from the parking lot all the way through. This was an engineer nightmare because it was in a hill area, um, and they were able to get that done. But this is a negative. There were woodchips. Woodchips are not, not only not desirable, they're not really allowed under AAV laws. And you can see one reason, see the dents under the swings? The woodchips don't hold the level of they're supposed to be at. They're supposed to not go below a half inch. You can see it's happening. And, and I don't know what the solution is, but these are the woodchips. And then we got a new swing, great swing for the handicapped at Goodwill, but again, look at the, under the woodchips. If a child fell out of that, which it has, I don't know if, I didn't put it, you can see the strap up above that, that comes down with the child. If it, I don't know that a handicapped child is using that because of the amount of underneath the, the wear, wear, wearing away of. But if a child falls out of that swing into the woodchips and dirt, they can be hurt. And I don't know what the answer to that is. Um, my suggestion, and this is another view of the woodchips, is because of that and this, this is disgusting. This is the boathouse at Trotting Park Fields. This is what our children are going into. If there's one for able-bodied child, there has to be an exact bathroom for a non-disabled child. No, I got that backwards. Non-typically developing child. I'll get it right here. Um, but this is what the kids are using and there's not one for a handicapped child. And this road that goes up, goes up to the parking lot, there were an instance where a child was hurt on the field. The coach had a choice. Leave the kid on the field and go get a grandparent, who's turned out to be a grandparent in a car that was handicapped that could not come down to the game, or take the whole team up to the parking lot with a child. We're not helping our kids by having this. And then, I didn't realize it, but you can see it up there, the gate is locked to keep people from, but they park in front of it anyhow. That's a handicap. That's a access for an ambulance. They have a key to lock box, I was told. But that is how our children are playing on the field. If a child gets hit in the face with a ball and you gotta get an ambulance down there, first they gotta get through the gate and unlock it. And if it's a car there, what do they do? There's little gullies on the side, they go down? So, these are just concerns of the commission that these things, how do we help these children at this point? The fields, Jeremiah is doing a great job with the fields, but these are also deficiencies and these are painful ones for people to see when their child is going down there. And I don't wanna be a naysayer because they've done so much good and that's gotta be really recognized. But it's not that the, the deputy of deputy is doing bad. It's just this is the way it is and this is where companies have to go. So, I'd say the capital campaign, whatever, make a priority list. We gotta get it done. We really do. We have to take care of the kids. That's it.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. Any questions for Kathleen? I know we're gonna see you again when we hear more about the playground at some point.
Yes.
That's an ongoing.
And my only other, I, I need to, I asked to be on the agenda for the PlaySpace, or actually, the playground. I do have one, couple of comments. We did sign a contract with BSS Engineering Surveying Design, however the order it goes, um, for the surveying. Right now, I think the whole, they have to have their retainer and then it will move forward. We've also got Hariuchi and Celine Landscape Architects onboard to do the designing once they get the surveying stuff. So, we're moving forward with that. We're moving forward with the naming. Um, it's just little bitty steps and I go back to the CPC, hopefully I'm gonna say yes, um, with the next application for August seventh. So, um, it's moving. It's more than it was two and three years ago. We're getting there.
Great, thank you.
Great example of committees working with, uh, you know, with the Selectmen's Office and the Town Manager's Office. Really great job and great job Public Works to get that whole list taken care of.
Thank you. And can we just have the folks who are here from, because I know I see some folks from the commission, if they just wanna just stand up and?
Will's our newest member. Um, oh, Rowan's here.
Rowan, okay.
Race is from the advisory team through the PlaySpace.
Yep, great. Great, thank you. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks for keeping us aware of what we need to keep doing.
I hope we're all moving in that direction.
Thank you. Great. Um, next, we have interview, vote and appoint committee members for, um, I think these are out of order in our packet, aren't they?
Board of assessors is first.
Maybe it's just in my packet. Does that, okay. Let me just look at yours. Okay, so we have, um, one incumbent reappointment for Board of Assessors, Brian Ridgeway, for a term until six thirty twenty twenty-two. Brian here? I don't think he's required to because he's an, he's an incumbent and he's uncontested.
And unregulatory.
And unregulatory, yes. So, move approval. Whoop, second then. Okay. All those in favor?
Term ending June twenty-two.
Aye, aye. Great, thank you. Um, for Conservation Commission, I know a lot of interviews were already done on the twenty-fourth and it looks like we have, um, another individual who needs to be interviewed on the fifth of August.
I actually think we cannot, I think we need to proceed with these appointments because for the Conservation Commission to do its work, they need some appointments.
Right. They have forms.
Correct.
And to have this many, this many positions available, I just don't think we can wait unfortunately.
And I think we've interviewed the correct number of people for the number of spots and it's unfortunate that this other last applicant was unable to attend and also not able to come tonight because we were hoping to consider her.
Extended it tonight so that we could try and do it, but beyond that, they're not gonna be able to meet to do their business without people who are.
I'm gonna have to make.
And to be fair also, uh, to not make these meetings, Conservation Commission needs to have people that are gonna make it to the meetings.
Right.
This does not give me great confidence that that would happen.
Right.
Any other conversation or thoughts about that?
No, I would move that we appoint the individuals that we've already interviewed.
Well, we have to.
Do them individually.
And also, we have three different full members, two alternate members and a full member two thousand twenty, so.
Okay, right, right.
I would move to appoint Courtney Bird to a full member term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd move we appoint Jamie Matthews to, as a full member, to a term ending two thousand twenty-two.
All those in favor, or second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would move we appoint Kristen Alexander to a full member term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Nope, Jen?
Kristen did not interview.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I know her, but she's been on the commission, but this is new.
Incumbent.
She's an incumbent?
No.
No?
No.
She just wanna come up. Sorry, I wasn't here on the twenty-fourth, so.
It's okay, it's okay, but yeah, I'm sorry.
No?
Gemma K, Conservation Administrator, I don't believe Kristen interviewed.
Okay.
So, do you, do you have a quorum if we leave one position open to allow her a chance to interview? There is gonna be one position open.
Be open regardless, right?
Madam Chair.
Maybe the other lady can come as well.
Yes.
Just a process suggestion. So, an incumbent can serve until there is a reappoint, a reappointment or an appointment of another individual to fill that seat. So, the, the board does have the option to exercise that with one seat or potentially even with all of them if you chose.
Unfortunately, um, Madam Chairman, Ms. Alexander hasn't attended our meeting in quite a while.
Okay, that's helpful. I mean, we need to know those things. Thank you.
No, I understand.
Um, okay, so with that bit of information, um.
I would move we appoint Russ Robbins to a full member term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any further motions? I just wanna make sure we've, two, three, right?
I would move we appoint Mark Gurney to as a full member, term ending two thousand twenty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we appoint Peter Walsh as an alternate member, term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I would suggest that we hold off any other appointments until we interview people who've applied for these positions.
Right. And so far, we have one further applicant, Ms. Warren, who is scheduled to attend on the fifth of August, so.
Well, we also have Kristen Alexander who needs to, should be invited to come back for an interview also.
Can, can we make sure that that happens, please?
Certainly.
And then with that information, we can go forward. Thank you. Great. Next, we have, um, an applicant for Historical Commission. Cara Foley, I think, is the only individual left to be interviewed for tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, my name is Cara Foley and, um, I'm interviewing for the Historical Commission. Um, I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, I was born and raised in Falmouth and I am currently running, um, my family real estate business here in town, so I've been involved in that, you know, since I was a kid. Um, so, I, I genuinely have an interest in what happens in our town and maintaining its beauty and charm and why people come to our town and love it so much. So, um, I do feel like I wanna learn more about the Historical Commission and, and how it works. And I feel like in that sense, I can also educate the people that come to this town to look for property. And also, um, I feel like from a real estate perspective, not everyone understands how it works. And so, I would like to be more educated on that and more involved.
Any more questions?
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Would you consider yourself more of a traditionalist with regard to, uh, the historic nature of Main Street or an innovator?
Um, I would say maybe a little of both. I, I mean, I, I would have to make an educated decision on, you know, whatever's being presented, but, um, I would say I'd probably lean more to the traditional side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments or?
Only for discussion.
Pardon me?
I mean, not for Ms. Foley, but I'm just for our discussion.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move to that part of the, thank you. Yep, thank you. You can sit down and then we'll discuss and thank you very much.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Looking at the charter for the Historical Commission, it does put a very strong recommendation that we have someone from real estate on the Historical Commission.
That was Ed's matter of right.
Uh, we have some freedom not to, but I think the recommendation is fairly strong from the charter. And so, I was happy to see Ms. Foley step forward that we could have that because all the other pieces that the charter recommends, we have.
Great, great point. Any other discussion? There's a motion.
Now, I'm just not, I was unclear as to what we had done with Mr. Hadad before, whether we actually had appointed him to a term at our last meeting, but I'm gonna assume we did not.
I don't think we did.
I think we appointed him to the Marx Building.
Right, I know we did that. Uh, and if the term's ending.
So, I think we have to do all of, and for Ms. Drescher, because you interviewed her, correct?
Correct.
But no appointments were made, correct, at the twenty-fourth?
So, the term ends two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, for two full members.
So, I would move that we appoint Ed Hadad as a full member, term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would move we appoint Cara Foley as a full member, term ending two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would move we appoint Lee Drescher as an alternate member, term ending two thousand twenty-two.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
So, there remains one alternate open, okay.
Ending in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
I completely lost my agenda. Thank you. Um, we're gonna have a status update on seasonal parking and related traffic issues, so you can comment after. So, Captain Reed, if you wanna come on up. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Captain Reed, Falmouth Police Department. Thank you for having me. Uh, I wasn't prepared to actually make any kind of a presentation, but certainly to answer any questions related to the. answer any questions related to the ever-present concerns regarding parking throughout the town. Obviously, this time of year, it always becomes a big challenge for us and we recognize the, you know, the challenges to the community. And I know that there was some, some questions and some confusion over some clarifications that were made to the parking bylaws this year. So, just to get in front of that, I just want to just inform everyone that we didn't change the parking regulations particularly with regard to street parking, but there was a clarification that was made, recommended through the Traffic Advisory Committee last September and then approved by the Board earlier this year, which clarified the way that we have traditionally always enforced one-street parking, which meant, you know, basically the bylaw before was confusing where it said, uh, tra, parking was, you had to maintain at least 10 feet of unobstructed roadway. The bylaw was clarified to say 10 feet in each direction and throughout my career, that's how we have enforced it, but the bylaw as written was a little bit confusing to folks, so that was, that was clarified this year. And we've been enforcing it to the best of our ability and we understand that it's created some concern for some residents and we sympathize with that, but it's not a change, it's not a new rule, it's just a clarification.
And could you speak a little bit to, we've had a number of emails around parking issues at the beaches. Could you just sort of, and I saw some great, some great communications that went back to explain some things, so could you just maybe speak to that a little bit? Has anything changed with parking regulations at beaches?
Well, specifically, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, specifically with Chappaquoy Beach, there's been a lot of, a lot of confusion and concern over the parking issues out there. That area has, has been a no-parking area throughout time and I, in fact, personally went out and enforced some of the no-parking last year during the season, so that's not a new rule either. It's just simply, it's, in the, in the clarification of the single-lane bylaw and in the, in the, particularly in Chappaquoy, there was a clarification where it was previously posted no-parking, it's now posted no-parking tow zone. But we've always, well, traditionally done our best to get out there and enforce no-parking because there simply isn't the space to safely have a standby lane at Chappaquoy the way we have at New Silver. New Silver has a dedicated space for a standby waiting area that's off the roadway, but in Chappaquoy, the roadway is so narrow that you can't have a standby lane and also have safe travel lanes for vehicles to get in and out of the island and, and for pedestrians to move through that area.
And any other questions? Any other parking updates that we had talked about that we thought that we needed?
Well, I think just to, just to confirm that, you know, we have, seasonal officers have begun for the year and so that downtown parking, we're better able to enforce the three-hour limit and also in the area of the downtown post office, we have a number of areas that have historically been designated 30 minutes for Monday through Saturday, excluding Sundays and holidays and there's an educational process certainly there for folks, particularly with new restaurants in the area. We found that some individuals were inclined to park in the 30-minute spaces and think they could have lunch for an hour or, or beyond and so that involves some adjustments in terms of behavior.
And those signs are back up there and they're, they're, and there's three or more signs.
Prominently posted, correct.
What about the metered spots that are three-hour limits? If a car stays beyond three hours by refeeding the meter, is that something that's ticketed or...?
Yeah, and, yes, sir, anytime we, anytime we observe that and make a note of it, then we will ticket that as well.
Because can't the electronic meters actually register that the car has not moved?
They do, they do in fact.
And so, it, it isn't anything whether we recognize it or not. It's...
If you ticket it, you're not going to beat that very easily.
But does the meter allow, actually allow...
The meter, the meter does allow for, for noting whether or not a car has moved out of a spot.
Does the meter actually allow refeeding? I would think we could set it so it would say, actually, no, we're not going to take any more money, you've, your term, time is up. But once you've been in a spot, the meter knows that's that car. Can we program it so it does not, so it rejects saying, no, there is no more time, you've reached, you've reached the maximum three hours?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to it, but it's certainly something we can explore.
And so, for now, if I, if I can ask, so if somebody's in Woods Hole and the, the officer in Woods Hole believes a car has been there for more than three hours, is there something they can look at on that machine to confirm that?
Again, I don't know the ins and outs of how the technology works. I don't, I haven't enforced those meters since they were updated, but, but yeah, they, the enforcement officer does know whether or not a vehicle's been there over the time limit before they will issue a parking violation.
I have a question. How can we ensure that the parking behind Pagnunum Park is not being used for long-term parking? Is there some kind of a way we can...
Well, you can't park overnight.
Overnight parking is something that we would certainly notice and so, long-term parking in, in the context of a, of a day, it's a little more difficult, but again, we have the, the, you know, the Main Street summer officers, the seasonal officers, we have two now, one more for the day and one for the evenings that can, you know, be a little vigilant about paying attention to that and all the other issues that happen in the bustling Main Street Village area.
I mean, that parking lot doesn't have a time limit in it, I don't think.
Correct.
It's just the overnight limit.
Certainly can't park overnight.
Because, I mean, you know, for somebody, I, I used to have my law office there, so I could be there for 12, I mean, I don't know how they would enforce it because I could be there for 12 or 14 hours in one day, but you definitely can't park overnight. And the other thing that I think officers have been really great about is I've seen tickets and it's great because otherwise that parking lot is so congested, you can't get out of it, but people making their own, and I understand it, they want to go to the book fair, they want to do other things, but they make their own spots and they just keep parking and I have seen tickets for that. So, I know that the officers are making their way into that parking lot to observe what's going on there because I have seen them during the day. Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Thank you, Captain Reed. Appreciate it. Maybe if you could just stay for a moment in case there's a further follow-up question. Sir, did you want to come up and raise your issue?
As I was saying before, my name is Joseph Strazula. I have a home on Old Dock Road, so I utilize Chappaquoy Beach quite frequently all during the summer and spring. And I would like to point out that even though, I have had a long conversation with the chief about this, even though the roadway is posted as a no-parking roadway for the past, well, three decades that I've attended, we've always had live parking accessing the beach or people sitting on the side of the road. This year, the sidewalk was removed, uh, which was a surprise to many folks and the wa, roadway was made wider because without the sidewalk, obviously, there's no, there's no sidewalk. But the point is that this is a dead-end road that ends at the island, so there's no through traffic other than for residents. The access to the beach is limited to residential stickers, there is no paid parking, there's no access other than that. And then when you go up the road, if the road is, has got a turnaround that was constructed by the town in order to turn around to access back towards the beach so that you wouldn't have to go to Chappaquoy and turn around in somebody's driveway. So, all these things for years have been accommodating people waiting at the beach to get into the lot when the lot was full, when people changed, so you wouldn't be driving up and down Chappaquoy Road continuously trying to access the beach, which residents do because they have no choice, or drop off at the beach, which is the other option. Or as I pointed out in the email, you go there at crack of dawn when the gates open, you put your car there, you somehow get back to wherever you're going, you leave the vehicle in the parking lot until you can access the chairs and other equipment that you need to bring and then you come back. So, you occupy the beach for the morning when you want to go in the afternoon. So, it's really, it's really turned into a problem on certain days. Not, yesterday I was there, I mean, you know, it was easy access, there were open spaces you drove in because there were not as many people on Sunday. I don't know what your, I know your officers came by three or four times on the 4th of July and the 3rd of July, moved people off the waiting line because they're still pulling over, they're still waiting at the gate, waiting for a space until a cruiser comes by and tells them to move along because it's not the parking attendant's job to enforce street regulations and it's not the police's job to enforce the parking lot access. So, we've got to catch 22. There are other places in town where you wait at the beach and it's off, it's on the roadway leading to the beach and people queue up there and it's an informal situation that nobody can agree is 100% adequate or not adequate, it's just what has been done. It's kind of like discussing the boats on the, on the grass that you were, the seagrass that you were talking about. So, my point I'm making is that without considering the servicing of the community to access to a public beach, you've taken a 30-year process and disappeared it immediately without anybody knowing until the day the signs went up on the beach and there was a no-queue sign put up. And my point is that we can work something out with either detailed officers on the very busiest days when the, when the, when the anticipation is there and the police department certainly knows how many calls they're getting and what kind of days of the week they are, but to, um, my family had three trips to the beach on that weekend, I mean, on that fourth, uh, one was to park a vehicle there, the other was to drop off, you know, my grandkids on the sidewalk, well, not on the sidewalk anymore, but on the, up against the wooden rail, get them to scoot through the rail and throw chairs over the rail. And I saw several occasions where officers came and told, you know, four or five cars that were in a queue to move along and then I came up and pulled into that same queue and dropped off the kids. It's like, it's not a, it's a, it's a process that needs to be worked out amongst the three organizations, DPW, Beach Committee and the Police Department. And I know the regulations are what the regulations are, but we're talking about an eight-week period out of a 52-week year. So, some accommodation needs to be made for the reality of the situation. I mean, we all know that without beach access, Falmouth does not do its residents service because that's why we're here, for the, for the ocean access. So, that's my point and, you know, be happy to, um, you know, work with anybody that wants any citizen input, but I know that, you know, everybody's got their own department that is caught in the catch-22 here. That roadway is never going to be widened to be a legitimate roadway because of conservation issues. It is not a throughway, it goes to nowhere, but to an island that has residents that are there for eight weeks out of the year and then the beach itself is not closed but eight weeks out of the year. So, I'm in the parking lot. So, it's kind of like, let's just deal with the heavy traffic when we need to, but let's not make this into a militarized zone, you know, just because we have a few congested areas. And my last comment is, I was on the beach the day that, that the guards pulled that man out of the water and we have some very good lifeguards. My compliments to them also.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments and just so you know, there is going to be a broader discussion, it'll be probably on an upcoming agenda, you know, really trying to look at parking and traffic issues at, around the town as a whole and how are we as a community, you know, what are some of the things that we can do to facilitate accessing some of those things, whether it's Main Street or some of our beaches? How can we better facilitate access that is both a little bit greener, less frustrating with, in terms of lessening the traffic burden and just kind of frees up, you know, all that time that people spend looking for it? So, it's part of a broader conversation and, you know, thank you for your comments we made. Yep.
And, and I just want to let you know how much I appreciate, a lot of people, you know, have issues with the sometimes certain problems that come up and I, I really appreciate that you said you'd be willing to work on a conversation about problem solving, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And we have your contact, so, and thank you, Captain Reed, for just updating that.
I have a question. So, we removed a sidewalk? That sounds unusual.
We did.
Well, we have TPW right here.
Yeah, Mr. Jack.
I wonder why that was done.
Ray, did you want to just comment on that particular piece, just to give, he's talking about the removal of the sidewalk before, on Chappaquoy Beach Road or Peter? Thank you. We just gave you a question so you could finally get up and move around.
I had to get up, so I volunteered. Those seats don't do any justice. We've had problems over the years, it was, was mentioned with all our beaches, with stacking lanes and queuing lanes that get into the beaches and people want to mimic and they want to follow Old Silver Beach. Not all beaches can do that. We had it at Falmouth Heights, we paved, we paved the parking lot and made more area for more vehicles down there. But last year in particular, in the fall, we did have conversations of how we could make parking better at the different lots. And it was mentioned at Chappaquoy Road, could something be done? And we did look at it, but as Captain Reed said, you need a full 30 feet of roadway in that area. We only, when we, we actually went out there this past week before the 4th and we knew the, there was some congestion problems out there and when you pull the tape across the street, you're only getting 28.5, somewhere in that range. It's not, 20, 28, it's, it's a few feet short. So, at some, at some point in time, the vehicles that are exiting out of Chappaquoy Road and people going into Chappaquoy Road, there's going to be a conflict with the cars going either in or, or out. But it was tried to remove the sidewalk to see if we could make a stacking lane in there. The sidewalk really didn't have a, a major purpose in that area, no one really used it, you had the parking lot and you had the roadway. So, we wanted to see if something could be made in there, but we just didn't make the, the distances. And last, last summer is when we, the signage went up, uh, new signage went up that said, no parking along with the guardrail. So, this past week is when we put the, attempt the, through the Police Department, the Public Works put the temporary no-parking signs out.
We need two feet. We got to find two feet.
Well, we do have conservation here tonight and I don't think they're willing to give up two feet of a dune, but in all reality, the...
I think I might have noticed that.
The roadway is, it, it's, it's constricted on one side by the guardrail and the other side by the dunes and you can't really move the guardrail because if you move the guardrail, then the parking spaces and the parking lot start to get restricted and you can't get the flow of parking.
Domino effect, yeah.
So, everything kind of flows to the other side of the street.
But I just want, but I, so you guys moved the, removed the sidewalk in order to try to accommodate this idea of creating...
Try to see what can be done and accommodate.
Okay.
Yeah, and the measurements didn't, did not fully work out and that's when we striped the, the line, the white lane line last week for the no-queue line. And to top it off, we also have the area further down Chappaquoy Road that's blocked off with the, we have some of the, at the seawall, so there's areas down there that are restricted and constricted.
Thank you. So, bears maybe some further conversation or creativity about some of the other options that we talked about, but did you have anything else, Don? Thank you, Peter.
I was just going to say, I wonder if during summer for a short period, there could be one travel lane and traffic would have to stop before the queuing, take turns?
I mean, so, I can't answer for police, I can't answer for fire, but for Public Works, I mean, we, you have to have unilateral lanes, we have to keep them open for emergency traffic, so...
Right.
Someone would have to be down there, it would be almost like a construction zone, someone would have to be down there guiding people one way and guiding people another way.
Right.
Which is the detail idea that we had heard about, so. I don't want to get too much in the weeds of this because I know we can have sort of further conversation about it, but I appreciate that's helpful to get that information and... Okay. Yep, Captain Reed?
Madam Chair, I just want to address the question of the police detail because it was, the suggestion was to use a police detail only in the, on the periods where they'd be most needed. That's also coincidentally the periods where we're in, we have the least availability. We're stretched pretty thin, particularly in the Fourth of July. And I, I have no confidence that we'd be able to even provide you with that detail on that date. Uh, I do know that, uh, I know you mentioned that the residents have been doing it over a number of years and I don't dispute that fact. I would suggest to you that we come to enforce when we're called and asked to come and enforce. And, uh, and that happened a number of times on the Fourth. I've been there, I went there once myself. Very few of the people that we observe actually get a parking violation. It's more of an educational thing, we just ask them to move. And, uh, and truly the, uh, you're, you're absolutely right, the parking attendants don't do the enforcement, they call us, that's our job. Also do the residents of the island and we're trying to be responsive to everybody's needs.
I'm not putting any blame.
Yeah.
There's no, everybody's trying to do the best they can, absolutely.
Yeah.
I just would like some sort of organized resolution so that we can end up with, uh, access that is not confrontation. And, uh, and that's, that's the only problem. And many residents, I'd say fifty percent, and sometimes on the line that you move, don't even have the beach that is. So they're sitting there blocking traffic in a line that they just see in front of the beach. And until the attendant comes out and tells them to move, or an officer comes and tells them to move, they don't know, they're not even supposed to be there because they don't read that little sign block.
So some education and maybe some further, like I said, we're, we're trying to think about ways, because that's not the only beach, obviously, where there's difficulty. There's a lot of beaches where we, um, even at Old Silver where you have a dedicated line, it still has been, you know, we've had times when the line has, um, inappropriately gone way past that dedicated lane. So, um, it bears further conversation, so, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, um, let's see, oh, yes. Just come on up. Is it for Captain Reed?
No.
Oh, okay. Then he can, thank you.
I don't know if this is proper, but, um...
Identify yourself, Mark.
Oh, Mark Fineran. With the, uh, conservation and the, the parking, uh, the spotting of the dinghies in the grass, I, I know it's a problem, but I think we're creating another problem without a solution. I mean, picture yourself as someone who comes down maybe a couple of weeks a year. I mean, they're going to come down two weeks from now and see these signs up there that tell them they can't put their boat or their dinghy where they've historically always put their dinghy. I have friends who have chains that are driven into the ground that have been there for thirty years and they lock their dinghy to it. Um, yeah, I think that maybe they should come back with some kind of a survey and, and recommendations, what these people can do. Or maybe just a ban on the kayaks, which might reduce the number of spaces and then deal with the people with dinghies because I, I, this is going to be a problem, I guarantee you. People aren't going to know what to do when they come down, go out to their boat and historically, I mean, they paid for their mooring and they've put their boat in that spot for thirty years. Um, I think maybe we should have a little, a few suggestions as to what they're supposed to do, or...
Yeah, and I think that, that's, I think that's what the board was getting at, that conserva, the, the signs themselves don't say any kind of penalty, it just says you're not supposed to do it. So obviously, conservation is going to have a number of calls. So I think it's, the suggestion you're hearing or the concern from this board, I think you're raising it, is that hopefully there's some really clear, you know, and it's going to be extra work for you, Jen, and for the office, but hopefully there's clear, um, you know, suggestions and sort of that explanation because I'm quite sure you're going to be inundated. It probably is helpful to have some kind of flyer or something on the website to direct people to because they're going to want to know what some of the options are. But I think...
Some people are going to come, see the sign and not have the ability to, to move their dinghy and, um, you know, most people abide by the law and the rules. I just, it, it seems a little bit loose to me, that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you're, and I think you're pointing out some of the things that, that this board has some concerns over and that conservation, you know, probably we can maybe have you come back and give us an update on how things are going and, um, because it's going to be gra, it's going to be a learning process, it's not going to happen overnight, so. Yep, yep, sure.
Really, the signs are more of an educational, you know, educate people that we really shouldn't be storing these boats on a salt marsh.
Right.
It erodes the salt marsh and it causes the banks to erode. Again, specifically, Great Bay has historically been a problem. I don't know the answer, um, like I said, for the, for the town. I don't know if the town wants to, um, install dinghy, kayak racks, dinghy racks. I mean, that's beyond what I was going for. I know that associations have done that. Um, the town should, we should probably have a discussion of what they can, we can offer the community a place to put their boat. I get it. But my job is to protect the resource areas and that's what I'm trying to do.
And I think, you know, I think the conversation you've heard from the board and from folks who've commented on it is, and, and, you know, you're reiterating that, it's really more about the awareness and education than it is about a penalty. Because right now, we understand there's going to be a phase where people are not going to know of another option or particularly if they're in an association and there aren't racks, there really may not be another option that's feasible, as Sue was pointing out and Doug, you know, and Mark, moving these, whatever that craft may be, some of them moving to them, to their yard is not going to be something they're going to be able to do on a, you know, when they come down next weekend and see it, right?
That's good to know that dinghy racks and tech racks are theoretically approvable by the Conservation Commission. That's been suggested.
We've approved a number of them on different associations, so if the town wanted to take the responsibility to install these types of structures so people have a place to put their boat, I, I know the town of Bourne does it. They have a, a town dinghy rack that is assigned to mooring holders in that area. I think it was Monument Beach, that kind of thing. And we can look more into it.
Whether it's the town or the, uh, local association, and even associations that have got, a Great Bay Association could get formed to take this on and that could be something approval with. At least that gives them, as Marcus is suggesting, someplace to go as opposed to stop doing it, um, and you're out of luck.
And good luck.
Right.
Yeah. And so, we'll, we'll have you come back because we'll definitely want, because it's new and it's kind of a new educational component, so, you know, just in your, in your, out and about, in your operations, keep, you know, I'm sure we're going to want to know what kind of numbers, you know, terms of that kind of stuff.
I can reach out to the other towns because those signs, those, um, PDS were given to a number of the agents on the Cape so that we could have these signs made up. So I can check back with some of the other agents and see what those towns are doing.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks for being proactive and educational to start.
I'm trying.
No, thank you very much. Okay, we've done, okay, now presentation, vulnerability assessment from Woods Hole Group.
I don't think I've ever been before the Board of Selectmen this many times in one night. Jen McKay, Conservation Administrator, and the staff leads on to the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. The committee has been working with the Woods Hole Group on the vulnerability assessment for the town. If you remember, the assessment was funded through an appropriation, I believe, of the November seventeenth town meeting, capital plan, um, to undertake this work. So, um, I just want to thank all of my colleagues and all the departments that have provided a tremendous amount of support to Elise while she's trying to get really specific information on the town assets. It required a lot of work from the Engineering Department and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Welcome, Elise.
Thank you, and thank you, Jen, for that introduction. Um, again, my name is Elise Laduke, I'm with the Woods Hole Group. We have been working with the town on a climate change vulnerability assessment and adaptation planning project. I was before you in December. Here we are at the end of Task Two, we've completed the vulnerability assessment, so we're here to give, um, the Board of Selectmen and the public a bit of an update. Now what I push, that'll do. So I'll start with a bit of a review because it's been more than six months since I spoke about this last, to let you know where we got to at the end of Task One and the results of our vulnerability assessment, um, from Task Two, as well as some of the products and visualizations that we've produced that can help not only inform town staff as they start to manage these properties moving forward, as well as public education, um, moving forward. So what are we trying to do here? So the overall project methodology is to use the Massachusetts Coast Flood Risk Model that Woods Hole Group is developing for MassDOT to take that data and really apply it to the town of Falmouth and overlay it with the assets, um, that you have here. And looking at what our current risk to flooding and inundation is during storms, as well as our future risk, um, in the eyes of sea level rise. And so the colors you see here, the, the blues and purples are a more likely scenario for inundation that would happen during a, a smaller storm. When you get to the purples and greens, that's, that's a bigger storm, a less likelihood of inundation in a given year. The light green is a one percent, that's your hundred-year storm, that's essentially today's flood plain, the FEMA flood plain. And the, the yellows and pinks are, are very large, a two-hundred-year, five-hundred-year, thousand-year storm, sort of a, let's not even think about what could happen there. So this is a section of North Falmouth, just as a, an example of what the results look like. When I zoom into the whole town, um, it kind of gets lost in the, in the weeds, um, but this is present day. As we move forward to 2030, you can see how those more frequent risk of flooding moves inland a little bit and even so more with 2070. Now, this is not underwater every day, this is a storm situation. And even that fifty to a hundred percent bracket, that dark blue, um, isn't necessarily wet on a daily basis, that's just like a small storm that might happen in any given year, um, that you'd be expecting to have at least a little bit of inundation. So these are the kind of results that we're working with. What we did in the beginning was we, we talked about what results we were going to get, so as I just showed you, we have present day, 2030, and 2070. So we kind of have a current, a short-term planning horizon and a long-term planning horizon. We'll get the probability of inundation maps that I just showed you for each of those. And the town also select, our steering committee picked, um, two probability levels to also produce depth maps. So not only do you get the probability during a storm, but for instance, during a hundred-year storm or that one percent event, how deep will the water be? For their second storm event, the steering committee actually chose a more frequent storm, sort of a less large event, that five percent or twenty-year storm. Some towns are choosing the bigger event, what about the five-hundred-year storm? You can't really design to that, so I think this is actually a really smart way to go. Um, you get something that's more likely to happen on a more regular basis that maybe the DPW can, can work around, um, with some of the things that they're going to do. The process for this whole project really comes down to five steps, but the goal is really to come down to what is the risk for any individual asset? And risk in this case combines both the probability of flooding, how likely is there to be water in that location, as well as the consequence of flooding. Does bad things happen when this thing gets wet? Does it keep functioning? Does traffic stop? Or does everything just keep going? Is it okay if that asset gets wet? A boat ramp versus, um, a sewer pumping station, for instance. You might think of it as slightly different consequences of flooding. But we picked the critical assets in town, we determined the consequence of their flooding, their critical elevations, found their probability of exceedance and calculated those risk scores. Those assets, we were looking just within the model grid, so we, we didn't look at things that the town owned up, you know, in the northern part of East Falmouth because it's, it's kind of high and dry, sea level is not going to be affecting those areas. So we really focused on the assets within the model grid, within that purple outlined area. And those assets included all kinds of things, buildings, structures, above-ground utilities like wastewater lift stations, roads and bridges, parking lots, recreational facilities, the bike path and the trunk river sewer main. And then I've broken out boat ramps and coastal infrastructure separately because those are a little bit tricky. Those get wet every day anyway, and so we had to look at them a little bit differently in terms of risk. For each of the assets we had on our list, we then looked at what is the consequence of flooding? And consequence of flooding was broken down into a couple of different categories that we used to score. How big of an area of town is affected if that asset gets flooded? How long would it likely be out of service if it got flooded? What's the cost? And then what's the impact on public safety, um, economic activities and public health and the environment? So when we go through all of Falmouth's assets, this is just a very small subset of the assets we looked at. We had hundreds. This is kind of how the scores break out, you know, something like Town Hall, you're talking about an area of service being the whole town versus something like the Town Hall stor, Town Hall Storage Shed, it's really only affecting that one property, so you get a lower score for something like that. When you look over the, on the far right-hand side, you're really seeing things that are vital to the functioning of the town, police departments, town halls ranking as a higher consequence score versus things like sheds or, you know, not that the library isn't important, but maybe not as important as a fire station during an emergency in the functioning of the town. And these scores were developed through incredible input through the whole steering committee. There was a lot of back and forth, um, a lot of reality checks. We looked at the first set and were like, well, should that really be above this? And kind of made sure that everything made sense. Once we have the consequence scores, we really have to look at, okay, well, where on that structure does it matter when it floods? For some things, it might be an opening to the basement, um, for some things, there might be some piece of outdoor equipment, maybe a generator that's raised off the ground a little bit. Maybe it's the first floor threshold, um, indoor equipment or some threshold for significant damage. For all of these types of critical elevations, survey information was required and the DPW was fantastic. Um, they sent a staff member around and actually got the exact elevation of a number of our assets. Bridges, this was crucial because we actually used the low chord elevation of the bridge, the lower boundary of the bottom of the bridge, because that's where the water is going to impact on it first, so that, that interaction's not necessarily where the road's going to flood, but the first point where structural integrity might be impacted by any kind of flood impact. For other things like parking lots, playing fields, we were able to use ground elevation from LIDAR. So we didn't have to survey everything, but they went out and got the really critical assets and gave us some really good information to feed into our analysis. And then this is just to zoom in to this particular area, so the Town Hall parking lot reaching around to the back, this is the pond, um, the Town Hall main building itself. And then you can look at, for each asset, what is that probability of exceedance, um, at present day, at 2030, and at 2070. This is a little bit different for things that are ground-based, like the parking lot, as it is for something where we actually measured, um, a critical elevation. So for the instance, the parking lot here, you know that there's a hundred percent chance in a given year that a storm is going to get water up in the parking lot. But this map isn't necessarily telling you how deep. So if the thing you measured on Town Hall was two feet off the ground, your risk might actually be slightly reduced, um, because you're higher off the ground. So that, we accounted for all of that in our analysis as well. And with things like this graph, so we basically have, what is the flood elevation at any given point for each probability storm for present day, 2030, and 2070? And then we looked at what is the critical elevation of that asset? And for Town Hall, it's the downstairs back door, um, is the, basically the, the point of entry where the water would come in, and that's at an elevation of six point six five. So regardless of what that flood probability map is telling us, we know what the depth of the water's going to be. So even if the water's here and the door's here, that, even though there's water, the building isn't necessarily being impacted yet. But what I think this graph is really useful in seeing is that as you go forward in time from present day in blue to 2030 in red to 2070 in green, the probability that you're going to crest that critical elevation increases. So in 2030, you're at around five percent, at 2030, present day you're at about five percent, 2030 you're at about twenty, and then you're at a hundred percent, you're already over that threshold in 2070. And so your risk certainly increases as you move forward. And then we can actually take all of that information, those three probability of exceedance scores from the three timeframes. The consequence score doesn't change throughout time, um, but we took that score that we figured out in the beginning. And then you can come up with a risk score for each timeframe, and then we actually weighted them all together to a composite score for all of the timeframes together with a higher weighting, fifty percent of the weight is given to present day because that's a more, something we have to deal with now. A slightly less weight, thirty percent for 2030 and twenty percent for 27. We don't want to discount that completely, it's something we still need to plan for, but we don't want to give all of the weight to that, we need to think about what we're actually, um, at risk of now. And then we can take these composite risk score for all of our assets, for the roads, for the buildings, for the docks, for the parking lots, and rank them all together and really see, when we look at the probability of flooding and the consequence of flooding and put them all together, what are the most important things that we should be focusing on in Falmouth? This is a very big table. The table is actually much, much bigger, hundreds of rows actually. In the tech memo that I think Jen sent around to you guys today, we actually broke the results out by asset type because it is a little bit cumbersome to look at the gigantic, comprehensive table. So these are just the buildings and structures, so this gives you an idea of where the top risk is to buildings and structures in town. Not surprising, a lot of these are marine-related because they're the ones closest to the water, they're the ones that are going to be impacted first. But there are a number of sewer, um, infrastructure pieces in here. Town Hall ranks number six, um, even though, think about how far you feel from the ocean here, you're, the waterways actually get the, the storm flooding up here, um, pretty quickly. We also did roads. And then interesting thing about the roads is if, if you scroll through this, you'll see a number of the roads on here more than once. I think Manaut Road's on here more than once, Nashewina Street, Slurf Drive, and it's because we took the town's GIS road layer that has roads in segments. And I think that's actually useful because you can tell what segment of the road is having that risk. It's not the entire, maybe the road's a mile long, but there's only a small stretch of it that's actually at risk. And here I've actually identified which segment of that road it actually is. In the larger spreadsheet, it's really keyed to a GIS layer, um, and the GIS files will all be giving to, given to the town. And Bob Shay will have to help us all weed through it in the future. But there's a lot of data there, um, that can be of use to the town in the future. We did mash them all together, so this is all kinds of assets in one list, the, the top twenty. The marine resources assets, the docks and piers, because they're so close to the water, The marine resources assets, the docks and piers, because they're so close to the water do rank high. But I think the most telling thing here is the vulnerability of Falmouth's roadways. That when you put this together with all the other assets, with all of the buildings, it's really a number of the roads and bridges that pop out as being the most at risk to sea level rise and coastal flooding in the future. But those tables are really overwhelming. So how can we break this down into slightly different forms of reporting? And we actually did two kinds of other deliverables. One are these asset summary sheets and one are asset specific visualizations. Now the summary sheets, I don't think are going to be quite as useful for public outreach, but I think these are going to be incredibly useful for department managers and, and people who actually manage these structures and buildings. Because it gives them the exact elevations at their particular asset. We put twenty of these together and the assets were chosen with input from the steering committee. What assets they thought they would get the most use of having this detailed information put together. It gives you when it's likely to be overtopped the first time at that critical elevation in both, in all three of the out years. And where it ranks with everything else, both with and without the roads. The roads, there were so many roads in Falmouth, they sort of overwhelmed the, the ranking. And then we have these asset specific visualizations. And these are the ones that I think are going to be useful for the public outreach and for the public education and to really drive home that we have to plan for the impacts that are going to happen to the town. The steering committee selected three very different types of assets. We have the Mitchell Bath House, the Green Pond Bridge and sort of the Water Street area as sort of a unit down in Woods Hole. These are not necessarily the top one, two and three assets. These were sort of things we thought would be the most visually informative. And so the Mitchell Bath House, for instance, we have sort of a multi-tiered visual here. The first one is an image that shows the level that the water would reach and the depth that you would have at that location during the hundred year storm in present day, twenty thirty and twenty seventy. So we have it both this way as well as actually watching the water kind of come up for all three of those out years. And then we have the same thing with the Green Pond Bridge. And this, it's the, this depth of flooding is really the depth above that low chord elevation of the bridge. So how much of the bridge face itself is actually being impacted by the floodwater? So in present day, that hundred year flood is two feet of the base of the bridge would be pushed against by water, even though the bridge itself might not be overtopped. By twenty seventy, the whole bridge itself would be overtopped in a hundred year storm. And this one's a little less striking just because everything kind of turns blue, but we have the same thing.
That's pretty striking.
Everything turns blue. But we have the same thing for the Green Pond Bridge. This one's a little bit different. This one, we wanted to highlight a series of assets in the Woods Hole area as well as sort of the flooding that the whole neighborhood would likely to experience. And so this entire figure is a present day risk. Because the town steering committee had selected that five percent and one percent storm for their depths. I put this together with the risk of inundation for five percent and one percent. So that five percent storm would get to the areas in light blue and the one percent storm in present day would get to the areas in dark blue. So it's pretty much most of this part of Woods Hole.
Could you just remind us again, the five percent is the twenty year?
Correct.
Okay.
Five percent is twenty year and one percent is the hundred year storm. And then we called out four different assets within the Water Street area. So we have the Woods Hole Sewer Lift Station, Water Street itself and the businesses on it as sort of a visual. The Woods Hole Drawbridge Hut and then the Woods Hole Drawbridge itself. And the little dashed lines on each of those sub figures represent the depth that the water would reach during that five percent or twenty year storm and one percent or hundred year storm. And then we can kind of click this through the twenty thirty and twenty seventy scenario as well. So we have these as potential visuals for outreach. The final piece of what we have done so far are looking at the natural resources. And for this, we really used the SLAM wetland results. So SLAM, you first start with a classification of your present day wetlands. That's what you're seeing here. The greens along the coast you can think of is salt marsh, the blues are water, yellows and browns are beach. And as you kind of click through, you can see how, you know, beach and marsh are lost. Things kind of poke through, but this is really hard to see because it's the whole town and you're asking yourself, okay, well, even if I summarize it for you in acres and I tell you, you have this many acres of regularly flooded marsh in present day and this many in twenty seventy, you don't really know where that's happening. A couple of things that are interesting on a townwide level though, are the overall reduction of marsh over the long term. So that figure in the upper right shows you that while there might be a slight increase in regularly flooded marsh in twenty thirty, as some of that high marsh gets inundated and turns more into the low marsh, Spartina alterniflora. Overall, you're going to lose marsh because there's just not enough area for the marsh to migrate into. And then this one at the bottom basically is showing that your total wetland is actually going to go down a little bit and your total open water is going to go up. That, that also means your total upland is going to go down. So you're going to be losing upland to boat, to basically open water and wetland migration, even though the wetlands themselves will be shrinking as they move landward. But we thought it would be useful to really key in on some of the important coastal areas in town. So we did site specific change calculations for all of the public beaches and all of the other major coastal wetlands. Some of the bigger marshes in the West Falmouth area and the ponds and Wacoit Bay on the south side of town. And so really all of these areas in the red boxes got separate calculations done for them. And so we have these sheets for each of those areas. And in some cases, we combine them. So Old Silver Beach and the marsh behind it got put into one because it's kind of a one unit. But you get to see what the aerial photo of the site is today, what the present day SLAM classifications are. So you can see that current marsh system, a big wide beach. And then as you move forward, the marsh starts to get minimized, the beach starts to erode. And you can see that there's just no place for the marsh to go. And you, the areas are calculated in all cases for these as well. So where do we go from here? So we have a lot of data, we have a lot of results. Some of them are a little bit shocking in terms of some of the water levels that we may have to deal with, especially in twenty seventy in certain areas. But really the goal here is to start developing short, mid and long-term adaptation strategies to address these flooding impacts. These could include anything from infrastructure repairs, recommendations for regulation and policy updates, land acquisition or conservation, as well as other things. And the steering committee is going to be crucial in informing what those recommendations are. Woods Hole Group will certainly have a set of our own recommendations, but the steering committee is going to be crucial to refining and finalizing those. We do have two additional steering committee meetings planned as well as a final presentation to you. I think we're targeting October for a final product and therefore a final presentation to you. At the end, we'll have a final report, a series of outreach materials. I think we also have scoped an additional public presentation or two. So if you have suggestions for the audience or the venue or the timing for when that would be the most impactful, I would love to hear that. But with that, I'll take any questions. I know that was a lot. There is a, that tech memo that Jen did send around. If you had, no, you did probably did not have a chance to look at it today. But if you have a chance to look at and you have any questions or comments following tonight, I'd be happy to field questions after today as well.
Thank you. That, that's just phenomenal. I mean, every time we meet to talk about these things, we're asking for exactly this. We keep, and, and then more that, that we didn't even know existed. I mean, that's just really, you know, the, the thoughtfulness that went into really understanding how to assess these, you know, these different vulnerabilities and really give us something to quant, a way to quantify them and, and, you know, sort of rank them and think about them. We have this conversation as a board all the time. I think most recently we just talked about this exact issue about how do we, how do we know where we have to focus the town's efforts? And so this is really just a tremendous product. And, and I know there's still work to be done on it, but on behalf of the board and the town, I mean, I can't thank you enough. These are, as you, you know, you're pointing out, these are such critical, this is, these are items that impact every piece of, you know, daily life for folks who live in the community. And so to be able to look at that and, and use it hopefully in a constructive way to plan is just, you know, a tremendous tool and an asset. So thank you, that was phenomenal.
Could you tell me who's on your steering committee that you've cited here?
Jen's going to have to help me with that, but pretty much someone from every department in town. It has been, Falmouth has been a pleasure to work with. I have not ever worked with a town that has so much participation and they're just interested and they're responsive and they're helpful. And they really want this to be as good of a product as it can be. But if, I don't know if you want to.
That's, that's probably. Does that answer your question?
I mean, we had folks, I mean.
So it's basically town staff.
It's town staff and the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee folks have also been very involved.
Okay. Thanks.
Doug, did you have a?
Just, when are we going to really put it out there? Not till October?
October would be when the final report and presentations and everything would probably be kind of wrapped up and presentation ready. There's nothing that says the public presentation that is where scope to do can't happen earlier. We have the results. What we don't have is our recommendations for actions. And so depending on what the purpose you think is most important to have that public outreach. And if it's really to communicate the risk and the future of sea level rise, we're, we're ready. But if we want to wait until we have some proactive, warm fuzzies that we can go along with the scary stuff, I think October.
Well, because you know at any public meeting, what people are going to ask after they see that is, what are we going, what are you going to do? Because that's the natural, we could look at that all day and then you're just sort of, you know, paralyzed by that, the fear of that happening. They're going to want to know, what are we doing? So I think to have your recommendations are going to be a key component of, of bringing that to the public.
And I, I would add that the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee also put forward a application for another MVP action grant to look at specifically the Surf Drive area. So that will really drill down even more farther than this scope could actually do. Looking at those roads, those natural resources, the town assets that are down there, the sewer main, the bike path, the bath house. And really a lot of those assets are what percolated right up to the top in this assessment. And so it, one of the recommendations is going to be, look at that area really closely and, and they're already funded to do that. So they, they were awarded that grant to do that. So that's sort of a, in tandem, but moving this much farther along than it could have ever gotten in terms of actual actionable items, not just, oh, you should look about elevating the road. But that will actually look into, to what elevation and where could you do it and which sections of the road and things like that.
Thank you. Any other?
Will we be getting printed copies of this whole report?
Well, I'm sure when it's done. You're saying of this particular.
The task two tech memo is mostly complete. I'm calling it draft until after tonight in case you folks had comments or additions that you wanted to add to it. But what Jennifer sent around to you today is essentially final, but those tech memos are meant to be interim documents on the way to a final document that wouldn't be available until October.
You know, just in terms of where this is going, I was thinking, I like Megan's idea about having suggestions for the public presentation. As much as I prefer to do those things in the summertime because we have a fuller population. I, I think it would be great if we really publicized it and, you know, folks who aren't able to attend can, can really at least look at it from FCTV. But I was wondering, you know, when we look at what are we, you know, what is the action? What are we going to do with this information? And, you know, it might be retreat, you know, you often hear about that. I think it would be helpful maybe to look at sort of superimpose the, you know, the, the important assets as you've, as you've well designated. What are the, what are, where's the available town land that's not in a flood zone? Like what might Falmouth look like in, in fifty years if we, you know, if town hall has to, what's the next best place to build a new town hall? And so when we're confronted with, you know, financing decisions such as, you know, do we shore up? Do we raise? Do we, how does that compare financially and otherwise and, you know, community will with, you know, moving it to X space or something? So I think that might be a nice practical place to go.
Yeah, and I, I certainly, I don't think we can get down to like dollars and cents, but we'll have some rough cost estimates associated with the recommendations that we come up with as part of this project. And I, I think what you're suggesting will likely be in there. You know, things like, well, where could you relocate something to which areas are just vital to keep where they are? Where you just protect and armor and which areas are more suitable for retreat? And I think in no case is one solution going to be the solution for the whole town and for every asset. I think each piece is going to have its own, its own set of solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I'm, my, my recommendation is right along with Sue is saying, I, I think we have to really look at the tangible recommendations. You know, what modifications do we have to make now and, or plan for? What kind of eventual costs associated with it? Because until, I think it really takes a, a real form, hearing percentages, probabilities or what have you is, is just not going to connect with most people. I mean, I think that way, but that's because I'm a physicist and that's what I deal with and things like relativity and quantum mechanics. But, but for, to be real for people, I think we have to really look at the recommendations of that steering committee. Or what are the projects that we need to be thinking about and what kind of a timeframe do, should we be looking at them in terms of trying to manage the risk?
Yep, absolutely.
I think we're going to need to look at, you know, historically what we spend to maintain these assets currently. And, you know, what can we do to minimize that?
Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or? Thank you. And I, and I think, you know, what will probably happen, you know, the board will make their decisions, but I'm sure this is going to be something that's presented to the public on more than one occasion. Because this isn't just a one time, hopefully you can get here and see it. I mean, again, we have seasonal, you know, folks here are here seasonally and so these are really, you know, we're going to, this is going to be an ongoing conversation. We just spoke about this at our strategic planning about trying to get exactly what you're presenting to us. You know, this very clear, you know, really quantifiable list and just, you know, data about all of these assets. So this is exactly what we were hoping we could use to kind of have that community conversation.
And I think just to think outside the box, I think the public presentation doesn't have to be a presentation. Woods Hole Group has in the past had more of a community open house where there's stations set up, maybe some computers where you can zoom in and out on the results if people want to see their house. If people want to see their road. It's really hard when you look at a map of all of Falmouth to really understand what's happening in any one spot. And so there could be, you know, understanding the results and understanding the scoring. And so we can do some creative things that I think would make it more personable to people than just me standing up in front of a room and, and talking again. But, you know, maybe there's a, there's a piece of that, like an intro presentation and then some stations for people to go around. But that way you, you're reaching people on multiple different levels.
So smart. Yeah. Thank you so much. Any other? Thank you. Really, really wonderful. Really appreciate it.
Good job.
I know. It's a lot. All right, we have a status update on the Route twenty eight road reconstruction design process. Mr. Jack?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, everyone. This will be a brief update on the Route twenty eight project overall, which is eighteen thousand feet that extends from Palmerav out to Oxbow along Main Street and that portion of Route twenty eight going east. I'm going to speak first to the surface improvement project because it's really two projects included in one. The surface improvements as well as the water main and finish up with some photos of the water main. So don't be afraid, this won't be that bad this time. Anyway, as the board knows, several months ago, at the beginning of the year, we submitted the conceptual project overall for the surface improvements through the county tip program, that's the transportation improvement program, which would be the funding venue for the project. The town is not funding the overall project that would be handled through that. It was important to get that in early this year because the JP, JPC would vote on the next capital plan in April. And then they finalize it usually in May. So the project was received in time. It scored well, scored eighty out of a hundred, which puts it very high on the list. So it made it to the list, but not on the CIP. The CIP would have been fiscal year twenty to twenty five. But the only reason that it didn't make it on was because the list didn't change this year. Because they had a, one of the other projects that was presently on the list needed additional funding. So they decided to just carry over last year's list for this year. So the hope here at this point, since section three, which is the area from Sandwich Road at the Oxbow, was reviewed by the boards committee, which did a very good job. And I'm not sure yet what the conclusion is going to be at the state level with Mast dot. When we submitted the project through the tip program, Mast dot is an integral part of that program as well. They're what represented at the meetings. So it was with the caveat that section three was going to go on to redesign. So now it constitutes a substantial revision, which means it will have to go back to them for their approval. But I'm still cautiously optimistic that we would be able to get that approved there. The good news is that the project stayed intact and that we are still looking at the full project area. And we don't yet have a decision on section three. So at the present time, the consulting firm is finalizing the redesign of section three at the conceptual level. They will then meet with technical representatives from Mast dot to go over some of the details before the resubmital. Then it'll be resubmitted through Mast dot in order to try to obtain their approval. So there'll be a number of design exceptions that will follow that. Hopefully the project as it is conceived by the committee, I still believe is viable and hopefully that's how it will go through. It's entirely possible state could come back with some suggested revisions, in which case we would have to revisit it. Beyond that, we would proceed throughout the rest of the year with twenty five percent design. Hopefully we would have that before next April to be able to. Uh, hopefully we would have that before next April to be able to enhance our, uh, place on that list. So normally a project goes on at the last year of the C I P. So in this case, if it was on this year, would have been year twenty, twenty five. But not all the projects are in, uh, the same state of design and readiness. So therefore a project can advance on that list and come up, uh, the closer it is to fruition. So that's our goal, is to try to get it closer and advance it by a couple of years. So in theory, we could be looking at a twenty three year, or twenty three year, twenty twenty three year for theoretical, uh, funding and possible construction. So that's where we are with that piece. And then I wanted to run through the water main because this is probably more immediate for everyone.
So Ray, just while you're doing that, I know there had been some conversation that we heard. Um, I just wanted to make it really clear that we, we had heard some conversation in the community that, um, it had already been, you know, that design for, um, that third phase had already been voted down and we're not even at the place where they, they're going to revisit it again.
Yes.
Because it has to be because there was a substantial change.
Correct. Correct.
I just want to be, I just want to clarify that for folks who are very concerned. We were hearing that concern that it had already been, you know, sort of given a negative, you know, return from, from the state.
No, no, that's not, uh, I don't know where that came from, unfortunately, um, but nonetheless, it is, it's not a valid concern.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So where we are, um, C C Construction is the firm that is doing the water main installation projects. It's a sixteen inch main that's going in through the eighteen thousand foot project area, which is about three and a half miles. They started in mid-April, worked through, uh, June fifteenth, which gives them roughly a two-month construction period. Uh, they did extremely well, in my opinion. Uh, they laid about fifty seven hundred feet of sixteen inch main, which is significant. Uh, all the services are not on that main. So that means that the main is in, it is connected at Oxbow to a twenty inch main. It's connected to an eight inch main uh, down near the school administration building. Uh, but that gives it full flow. Uh, so the water's not just sitting in the main over the course of the summer. Uh, and it also improves the system hydraulics as well. But there will have to be, the individual services will get transferred over to the new main when the project starts up again after Labor Day. And that is when we are proposing, uh, for the next construction period. And at that point, they'll pick it up at Sandwich Road. Uh, there's a small section of sewer line that has to go in. Then the other connection will be made on Sandwich Road. The services will be going in at the same time and then the main will continue from Sandwich down toward Jones Road. Uh, what's good about this, however, is that we're not going to be including the intersection on the disconstruction because we already did it. Uh, we funded that through the, um, not as part of the sewer main project, but in conjunction with the sewer main project. So we put in about fifteen hundred feet of sixteen inch main under the intersection at that time because I didn't want to have to go, go back in there and rip through the intersection in order to get this main in. Um, so fortunately the town did fund the project and here we are. We didn't waste our money with the sixteen inch main. So that will be up at the Admiralty. It'll go from Sandwich Road to the Admiralty and then pick it up on the other side at Castle of Verlada. Um, which is where the other end of that main is, heading down toward Falmouth Heights Road. And the project will continue, uh, west thereafter, depending on what the weather happens to be. So if we had another winter like we did this past winter, that's a very good construction period to be able to go through. So a lot of work theoretically could have been done this last winter if we had that, uh, in place. So the expected completion overall is going to be the spring of twenty twenty. So we starting to fall. They may have to take a winter break. Then he would start up right after the weather breaks in the spring again uh, and finish everything up down to Palmer Avenue. And it is expected to be able to complete the mainline construction and the transfer of the services by the end of the spring of this coming year. The main paving on that area, however, uh, would be set off until the fall. Only because you don't want to be paving over a freshly dug trench, whether it's a service connection and or the main itself. You do want to have time to have traffic impact on it so that, uh, makes the proper compaction. So we're on target for everything on that. And the project originally was going to be four or more construction seasons, which would have carried it through to the year twenty twenty one. So the contractor's really doing very well. So this is where the project began. A wet tap is any time that you cut into a live main without shutting it off in order to do something. So that's what this particular fitting is. This fitting is permanently installed. The top's a little bit different. This was the cutting mechanism that was installed on top of the fitting. The fitting on the main is permanent. This was a twenty inch main on Oxbow. So it doesn't look that big in the picture until you look to the left and see the guy's arm. Uh, and that gives you an idea of what the diameter of that main is that they're working on. So it is rather large. Uh, but what the end product of this device is that we now have a valve inserted at that location without having had to shut the main down in order to do that. Shutting down a twenty inch main can be very disruptive. This is the sixteen inch main with two sixteen inch butterfly valves, uh, on the ends. And then the smaller valves that you see on either side are eight inch gate valves. And the difference between the gate valve goes up and down as a slide gate. A butterfly has a valve that is a disc that's in the middle of the main and it just turns in order to shut off. And on a larger mains, you need that due to the pressure differentials on both sides of the main when you shut a main down. Opening it up can be extremely difficult. A butterfly makes it very, very easy to operate. So these are set up for an intersection. So the entire assembly is done above ground. And then the whole thing is picked up and set in the ground where, uh, it's connected to the respective mains after that. So this would show you what it will look like once it's in the hole. This is installing a sixteen inch main that has eight inch valves and eight inch, it's, uh, they're offsetting valves. Uh, one's going to a street and one is going to a hydrant. And you can see the strap, uh, device that they're using in order to lower it down in the hole. This is some of the older main that was taken out. Now normally, we abandon the main in place. Uh, but in this particular, there was one area through there where the old main was in the way and it made it very, very difficult to try to go around it. Um, so rather than go around it, we went through it. We just took the old main out, capped it off. And this is some of the remnants of that old main.
Looks like it needs to be replaced.
And this is the inside of that old main. Uh, so believe it or not, that's not as bad as it could be. This is known as tuberculosis. Uh, it's similar to, um, tuberculosis in that it closes off the avioli of your lungs, all right, makes it more difficult to breathe. So tuberculosis in a water main is concentrated cell corrosion that builds up and has little tubercules that form of iron oxide or rust inside the main. And it has two main problems here. Uh, one is that it affects the system hydraulics. When you have a very smooth main, you have very little resistance as far as friction. So the system hydraulics are better. Uh, but once you start tuberculosis in the main, it starts closing it off. Older mains that were like sixes, six inch in diameter, actually in many cities and towns have an effective diameter today of less than two inches. That's how bad this can get. So overall, this really wasn't too, too bad as it goes. This is not possible with a modern main. Modern main is ductile iron and has a cement lining installed on the inside. So the water cannot physically come in contact with the iron in order for the chemical reaction to occur. So tuberculosis is not something that occurs in a more modern main. This is just the trench restoration. Uh, all the way in the back behind the loader, you can see the roller compactor. So this is hot mix as opposed to cold mix. Um, some contractors on some jobs put cold mix in the trench. And cold mix doesn't compact as well as hot mix does. Hot mix is more expensive to install. Um, but it's much more durable over time. So this is what the trench repair is. And just to clear it up for a lot of people that have asked about it, this is not the permanent setup until surface improvements go in. Uh, this is just the temporary trench repair. And once this section is completely done with all the services, we would do a milling and overlay of one whole lane, whichever lane the main happens to be in. Okay, so that would be the final restoration. But this is not the final. This is strictly temporary. And this is why we're doing the project. This is where the main connected at the school administration building. And back in eighteen ninety eight, when they manufactured the main, they molded the year of manufacture right in the domain. So there's no question that we built the old Lawn-Pond Pump Station in eighteen ninety eight. And this was one of the first mains that went into service to town. That's it.
That's great. Thank you. I, I have a couple of just questions that I know people have asked since you're here. Some of them aren't completely connected to this. But, uh, one is, um, Bike Ways had their meeting this week? No, last week? I don't know what week it was, but last week. And, um, yes, they, they had some questions about, I think that they had sent through Scott some, some input about phase one and phase two, kind of, um, you know, having some, uh, just suggestions about, um, issues around, you know, bike safety, pedestrian safety, and then how that would kind of flow and connect nicely, nicely to phase three. They just wanted to follow up. Um, I think you had said you were going to send it to the consultants for, or the traffic consultants. And they just wanted to make sure that it happened and to find out if any further input had come back on that.
I don't have anything back yet now. Um, however, I will make the board aware.
Great. Thank you. And then the only other part is an email that we all received about, um, just the sidewalk on Maravista. Could you just speak to that? Cause I, you know, I know it's something we've heard from a couple of folks about the concern of the state it's in now. If that's going to change, when that might happen.
By state, you mean it's termination point, uh, on the north side?
It stayed up sort of, so we've got some emails about, yeah, the, the fact that it's not very, it's not in a serviceable state is what I'm saying.
Today, as of today that I'm aware of, there's not a non-serviceable area. Um, the contractor has done a very good job of trying to get that curbing and sidewalk in as quickly as possible. And yes, there were times when the ramp areas, uh, were not accessible. And yes, that would push people out in the street. Um, as of today, I'm not aware of any non-serviceable areas that exist. However, uh, at the northern terminus, um, Mr. McConerty had, had drawn that out such that it would go up to twenty eight, but we stopped where we did. Uh, only because we haven't finalized plans on section three at Route twenty eight. Once we have that final, um, then we'd be able to continue that at any time. But we are already, um, planned to do that section. For the time being, however, uh, where it terminates now on the west side is the concrete sidewalk that goes up to twenty eight. So it's just going across the street for the time being.
Doug?
When do you think we might have the, um, better estimates for the burying utilities and have a discussion about whether or not we want to consider that?
That is going to be expensive. I can give you the estimate now that includes all of the utilities as far as the corridor area goes, but that's not include the cost for, um, some of the additional work. And that's in the seventy two million dollar range. Now that's carrying a forty percent contingency, only because there's a fair amount of unknowns at this point. But you'd be looking at twelve ducts for the power utility. Uh, they would be five to six inch. There would be seventeen ducts for the other utilities, which would include Verizon, Comcast, um, I T, Fire, Cape Net. And there was one or two others, um, which share that whole network. But you have to have two separate complete ductwork systems installed. And the problem, I think, for the town at this point is that both Eversource on the power side and Verizon representing the, uh, utility, the other utility side, uh, would be doing their own design. You cannot design their project for them. Eversource will not move unless they get a substantial non-refundable deposit. We haven't cornered them on what that might be. Uh, but they wouldn't even initiate or even consider design of a project of that magnitude without a significant deposit. When I say significant, I'm suggesting it's probably going to be something that would require a town meeting approval as far as a cost, cost level. Um, but we'll be getting back to you with that.
And is there any, is there anything during the, uh, waterline installation? Any kind of problems or any indications that there would be, uh, problems during the burying of the utilities?
The presumption is that the actual asphalt corridor area is pretty busy because we have gas, sewer, um, water already in there as well as storm drainage, um, conduits and piping. So the presumption is that these will probably go under the sidewalk areas on either side of the corridor area. And then it becomes a question of whether or not we have sufficient right of way to be able to accommodate that. Um, even the underground vaults would be substantial, like ten by ten for the power utilities that are pretty big. There are, there were a big, at least eight above-ground transformers. Um, they would be sitting off to the side somewhere. But yes, could it be done? Yes. Um, would it be challenging? Yes. The other last thing I think here is that keeping in mind that Eversource is not required to do this. So then the question would become in the end, the town in one way, shape or form through a bylaw and state law um, would literally have to compel them to do it. Under that law, Eversource would have to comply, but they don't have to pay for it. So we have to pay everything. Um, and there's two ways of doing it. Town can fund it outright if we wanted to choose a funding venue, um, save appropriate money at town meeting. Or it can be carried for the entire town over to utility bills and shared equally amongst the entire town community population. So there are at least two different ways of theoretically funding it. That much I do know at this point.
Good.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much, Ray. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Great. We have presentation, Falmouth Stormwater, uh, manager plan, I think it's, is it supposed to be management?
That's a Scrivenary, uh, should be the management plan.
Okay, management plan. Um, town engineer, James, James McGoughlin. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you, Madam Chair. James McGoughlin, town engineer. So, um, just as a, a little bit of an update on the stormwater management. I think the last time that, uh, I had presented any information was back in November to the board. Uh, the, the requirements start with the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy two. And EPA was designated with, uh, ensuring compliance with the Clean Water Act. And when they did that, uh, they came up with this program called the National Pollution Discharge Illumination System, N E P T S. You'll see that there's, there are a lot of acronyms and, uh, abbreviations for this, uh, this program. The, the N E P T S program has two basic, uh, branches. One is individual permits. So for example, uh, a sewer treatment plant would have an individual permit with specific, uh, guidance and requirements and conditions for testing and compliance. Uh, and many, um, manufacturing, uh, uses would also, depending on the S I C, uh, they would require individual permits. Um, and then there's also a second branch, general permits, which we're under. Uh, and that's more of a generic permitting system where individuals will comply with the, the, the general terms of the permit. Uh, but then of course adapt their specific, um, situations to, to comply with the permit. So we're under the, the M S four general permit, which is administrated, administered by EPA and the Massachusetts D E P. The M S four is, uh, another one of those, uh, abbreviation and acronyms. M is municipal, uh, and then the four S's, uh, separate storm sewer system. And the current permit is the two thousand sixteen M S four permit, which is, is, uh, was effective on July first, two thousand eighteen. The reason between, uh, the, the the difference between two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen was that there were, uh, some litigation that, that occurred. So the effective date was pushed back to July of two thousand eighteen. And with that effective date, there's a requirement that we submit a notice of intent to EPA and Mass D E P within ninety days of that, uh, that July date. So we submitted a notice of intent in September of two thousand eighteen. And that outlined our plans for compliance with six, uh, what they call minimum control measures, M C Ms. And it also required us to prepare a stormwater management plan, excuse me, within a year that, uh, documented how we would comply with that, uh, those M C M, uh, M C Ms. And, uh, once we filed. would comply with that, those MC, uh, MCMs. And once we filed the, the notice of intent, EPA authorized or approved our discharge, and that was back in March of this year. And it authorizes us to discharge waters of the United States through June of two thousand twenty-two. And it also requires annual reporting to EPA and DEP. And the first task in that first year of permitting is a stormwater management plan, which is a plan that I forwarded to Mr. Suso. It's about several hundred pages. And our plan is to
You're going to read that to us tonight, right?
Sure. Put these documents on, on the website and have them available for information purposes. There's, there's another document, IDE, IDDE, which I'll talk about in a minute. The stormwater management plan is a living document, so that over the course of our permit through the next ten or twelve years, we will be updating that. Most particularly in the, the appendices of the plan, there are different sections for updating, for example, stormwater outfalls, or catch basin cleaning, or optimization of street sweeping, that type of thing. So those are all in appendices that will be updating as we go through the, through the life of the permit. The minimum control measures. Number one is public education outreach. And what that requires us to do is mostly through our website, but also with brochures, informing the public of what, what the program is all about. And then also, MC, MCN two is public involvement, and that's receiving feedback, and also meeting with various committees within town, as well as some on the Cape. There's a informal group right now through the Cape Cod Commission that all, most of the stormwater management communities are involved with. And there's some sharing of information in terms of future sample bylaws and things like that, as well as a lot of training on how to proceed with some of these requirements. The MC, MCN three is the illicit discharge detection and elimination plan. And what that is, is, in our case, for the most part, looking at all of our outfalls and quantifying what the, what the quality of, of water that's being discharged into waters of the United States is. And that'll involve delineation of all the, all the contributing areas to those outfalls, and then testing both dry and wet weather to determine which ones may be an issue and may, may require some remedial work. In a lot of communities more urban, there's a lot of combined sewer overflow, and that's really not, not an issue here, but that's, that's one of the primary issues with, with the program generally, with EPA. Then, the next one for is construction, construction stormwater runoff control. And that's adding additional regulatory requirements. Right now, we have some, there's, there's a mix of a lot of town bylaws that impact some, but not all the requirements for the, for stormwater management. In particular, some of the, the volumes and control of erosion are ones that we're, we're lacking a little bit in terms of the regulatory process. And this also ends up being a, similar to a general construction permit, which any contractor that's, that's developing more than an acre of land is required under, to file under a general permit, similar to, to what we're, we're doing, that would, would regulate how they, how they regulate, how they develop that particular property in terms of stormwater management, erosion control, and that sort of thing. And this would add that, that regulatory framework from the town's perspective. Number five, post-construction management is a similar type thing, going through and looking at as-built, verifying that a lot of the work that's done is in fact capable of satisfying the requirements that are set out in the, in the original permits. And also preparing OAN plans for the owners of these facilities to be able to maintain them in the future. And also in that, that area, there's a, there's a requirement for the town to start looking at its existing infrastructure, and in particular, parking lots and roadways, and looking at ways to retrofit some of the, the assets that we have. And there's a requirement that we have at least five projects identified for retrofitting. And so, for example, with the, the parking lot here, or the parking lot out, out in the rear of the building, looking at retrofitting it with maybe some stormwater swales or something like that to, to address some of the issues. And then lastly, is the municipal good housekeeping, which is primarily street sweeping, parking lot sweeping, catch basin cleaning. There's a whole set of requirements that, that we'll have to go through in optimizing a catch basin cleaning, which right now, the highway department has a, has a pretty good program in place. But one of the things that we will have to do is look at maintaining all these basins so that they're only less than fifty percent full, meaning that the sumps don't have too much sediment in them. And the ones that do, coming up with a, a plan to optimize the, the cleaning and the maintenance of those ones in particular, so that we stay under that fifty percent maximum. And then annually, we have a reporting requirement that assesses the progress in each of those MCMs. Also looks at the outfall screening that I talked about, which is very important in terms of, as we go forward with the permit, will be additional testing and a fair amount of it to, to look at potential problem areas, especially with discharges to impaired waterways. And then a description of what we're planning on doing for the next year. And that's a report that, like I said, is an annual one, and it'll be due this September to update them on where we are. Primarily, it'll be the publishing of these stormwater management and IDDE plans on the website, and then as well as going forward with additional outreach.
Go ahead, Sue.
How much money is all of this going to cost? I think it's certainly important to the environment. I'm just curious on the budget side. Do you have any idea or any kind of parallels to look at to get a, an idea of what, what kind of money we need to set aside for this?
Yes. So what we've been doing over the last few years is requesting and have been receiving approximately fifty thousand dollars a year. And most of that money is, goes to consultants that help us prepare these reports. These, for the most part, put together by a consultant, common, Comprehensive Environmental Inc., CEI. They're also consultants for a number of communities on the Cape doing this type of work. And the cost, though, that's been estimated by some of the regional groups, is a lot more than what we've been experiencing. Some of the, some of the estimates are, you know, in the, in the order of a quarter of a million dollars per year, is what people are saying you'll end up spending. To date, we've been spending about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. When we get to the point of having to go back and retrofit some of these things, and there's some construction costs, there'll be added costs there, as well as added manpower for some of the things like the, the catch basin cleaning and the street sweeping, and maybe additional equipment. But that, you know, we'll, we'll be figuring that as we go forward over the next couple of years.
Thank you for that answer. I'm raising my hand for myself. But, yeah. And, you know, I think just the report that we just saw about sort of vulnerability assessment is really, I think, you know, these two things go together. We're certainly not going to want to re, well, I don't know, but we're going to want to consider if we're looking at retrofitting something, and it's a quarter of a million, or whatever it ends up being, if it's a big retrofit, if it's, if it's, you know, scoring really high as a vulnerable asset. I mean, that's something that I think, you know, as a, as a board and as a community, we're going to think about, are we throwing money at something that has a very high probability of being an asset that's either lost or significantly damaged? And so, I think, you know, as we're going forward with both of these projects that have some, have some natural connection, you know, to, to look at those, I think you said, to having like five or so projects that we're thinking about retrofitting. I don't know, you mentioned town hall, but then when I see that, that optic that she just showed us about vulnerability of town hall.
Makes you think twice.
It makes you think about, is that, you know, the best place to do a project like that? And I know that the, the objectives are not, that, you know, the, the goal of this is to have cleaner water, it's to protect the environment, but, you know, one component is obviously the finite financial resources we have for any of these projects. So I think the two have some connection that maybe we can look at them in tandem.
Right. And I think, you know, when we've had some of those steering committee meetings, I've been a proponent of weighting more heavily the, the more frequent or the closer near-term flooding issues, as opposed to the ones out of twenty-seventy, because to me, the, you know, the, the horizon is, is way out there, and I don't want to weight those as heavily as maybe some other people might. So I think the, the weighting of the, the assets and the, and the vulner, vulnerability of those is, is an important component. And that's why they're looking at the fifty, twenty, ten, as, as a way of looking at some of the more critical assets and, and weighting those more heavily.
Okay.
So, I know you've been mapping locations for taking out catch basins and putting in those pollution control structures.
Right.
I think there was like a few hundred sites. Is that, is that a?
Well, we have, we have over three thousand catch basins. And one of the things that, that we're required to do here is go through and, and identify all of the existing best management practice drainage structures that we have. So, we have a few of those storm scepters, which are those, those catch basins, or drain manhole with a kind of a spinner that, that spins out all the, all the sediment and lets it settle in the middle, and then you have to go in and most likely get that with a VAC, or I think it's very difficult to get a clamshell in, into those. But there, there are those. But then, I think I, last time, I had mentioned some other types of BMPs, like swales and things like that, that are a little less structural and a little bit easier to maintain, a little bit easier to build. So the, the total number of the storm scepter type structures that we have is, is probably in the dozens. But in terms of going back and retrofitting, that's always the easiest way. It's also probably the most expensive. And in a lot of cases, we don't have that, that capability, for example, here. Or in, in a lot of our facilities or assets, we're so close to groundwater that a lot of the traditional type of BMPs really aren't, unavailable to us. It's more of a surface treatment type. And then, of course, the challenge there is having the area available to, to accommodate it, because generally, there's not much of that either.
Right. So you'll have to try to target where you get the best bang for the buck, right?
Exactly.
Any other questions?
I was amazed how well the town recovered from the storm, I guess a week and a half ago. I've driven, I haven't seen quite such torrential rain that we had, I think it was on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
And the roads were in bad shape for, it seemed like twenty minutes, and I was amazed how well they, they then recovered.
Yeah. Well, again, going back to the, to the vulnerability assessment, that's one of the reasons that we're trying to push for that, that more frequent twenty-year storm. Because even though it's a, it's a twenty-year storm, I think what, what we're seeing with the intensity of some of the rainfall, it starts with, even though it happens maybe every two or three years, it's approaching that same, same level of flooding. That, in, in fact, if you look at the, the curves that track rainfall intensity versus time, a lot of them are twenty and twenty-five year storms, because of the, the short period, but the, the high intensity of the rainfall.
Do you have a question from the audience?
Yes. Mark, do you want to come up? I have a question for, just as he's coming up, just to dovetail on what Doug is saying, that I think, I've noticed, you know, there were a lot of kind of chronic problem sites that really haven't, I mean, knock on wood, but, you know, some of that Main Street area that was always chronically flooded, I mean, some of that we haven't seen for a while, even with some of the bigger storms. So I think whatever, some of the improvements are just overall improvements, but there are definitely some, I think the drainage is, is better than it's been for a while, so.
Thank you. As far as the rainwater goes, I mean, for one, Horsley and Witten makes a big business all over the world, planting, placing plantings in these swales that'll actually attenuate the nitrogen before it ever gets to the embayments, and also could possibly reduce the number of these expensive catch basins that, that they have. I mean, is that, that natural part of it? Is that any part of your plan? Because the, the plantings actually look great, too, in these rain gardens and such. And I mean, it's, it's nothing more than taking the swale that's naturally done and putting plants in there to just thrive on the nitrogen, whether it comes from the road water runoff or whatever. But is, is that part of the plan? Because it can save a lot of money.
Great, thank you. Are you able to speak to that?
Yes. That is part of the plan. And as I'm, as I had shown on some of those slides from White's Landing, those are some of the, some of the things that we've tried to implement. And those, those really are, those types of things are a lot easier to, to build and, and to maintain. But they're, none of these are without maintenance requirements. Any of these rain gardens, to, to really be effective, you have to have the right soil layers, and the plantings have to be right, and you have to maintain them, make sure that you don't have all kinds of invasives coming in and taking over the, the plants that, that do, do the job that you want them to do.
And you can't use Roundup.
That's right.
Any other comments? Thank you so much. Thank you for staying so late.
Thank you.
And thanks to, to DPW. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
We have done the Club Valley. We have a sign variance temporary offsite, off-premise signs for East Falmouth Village Association Annual Meeting.
I'm on that board, and I sent the email with the request, so should I leave the room?
No, you don't have to leave. You don't gain anything financially from being on that board. You might just maybe not vote.
Quite the opposite.
Yeah. So, any questions about this? This is something we see each year.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
There was a typo on the description of the location, actually, and it's at, one at the end of Davisville on the southern end, and one at the northern end of Davisville, and then one at Acapescot, and one at Shorewood, I believe. The description in the paper, in the
Quantity was three, by the way.
Yeah, it was actually four. And, well, the request was for four. It was only said three in the
Yep.
in the packet.
But that's okay. The agenda is just voting the variance. So it's not locked into any number.
We'll throw it in.
So we're looking for four signs that we've done this each year. So I think we had a motion from Sue.
Can I second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Great.
Minutes for a public session, June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. I can't vote on it, but are there any? Oh, they're not ready. Well, we really can't vote on it, so, okay. Any individual selectmen reports?
Just, just reminder that we attended the Bike Ways Committee, and Megan was there as well. And they're hoping for a new push to get that complete streets policy in place. And we're feeling like we might be ready for that now. And I think I agree, so we'll, we'll have to see how it plays out.
Just a few items. CCRTA now has the new trolley running through town. It looks very nice.
Looks really nice.
And I think it's a lot safer. And I think it's a lot safer um by virtue of the better equipment. Um and also it's now gonna be staffed and managed by the uh CCRTA and, and not a, a private contractor. Uh anyway, looks great. Uh the new uh high school multi-perp, multi-sport field um is virtually done. They're putting in the final concession building, which is the, and, and bathrooms. Uh but the field itself, the playing field, is completed. So all the fall sports should happen without any delays whatsoever, which is gonna be nice. And I must say, it's quite impressive, uh I've had a chance to actually walk the, the, the site and it's stunning because of the vibrant colors and the, the new stands um and the, and the new lighting and what have you. So I think the town will be very proud of this new asset that they've uh invested in. Uh had a lot, the, the good fortune to go to the Town Band Concert uh last week on the Fourth of July, which happened to be the night of the um of, of the fireworks as well. And uh Tom Boring, who's the uh Morris Pond Music Band teacher, uh directs that group and uh enjoyed the concert. And I think he's also the uh Music Department Chair for the entire district. Um and the last I've mentioned already, the fireworks display was uh terrific and enjoyed by a lot of people. And it was a perfect night.
Oh, it's beautiful. I just wanna mention two things, I, like Megan had said earlier, I don't think I've ever seen Falmouth as busy as it was or the lines on the streets to do various things. So real compliments to uh police, fire, public works, everyone involved. Um another thing is that the bridges over the canal, Sagamore and the Bourne, I attended this morning uh a meeting that got a lot of press coverage off Cape for the Bridge Fix is, is the group that I've been working with for about a year. I spoke on behalf of Barnstable County Economic Development, which I chair, um to essentially um applaud the state for working with the Cape Cod Commission and the Cape Cod Chamber. And we're looking for some, some design money and some public outreach money to come across. And this is just really a takeoff from what um, what Ray had presented in terms of ideas going forward. So to, to really get that much movement within a year of, of this coalition group is amazing and looking forward to, to more things to come. I think um, you know, it'll, it'll just really have a good impact on the lifestyle on the Cape in Falmouth, just getting to your appointments in Boston in more predictable time, less cost of goods. Uh because at this point, the, you know, the, the fact of the, the challenges the bridge has really come down and cost consumers money. So those are all improvements that um, you know, look ahead, we should see coming, so.
Doug?
What's up?
Um I guess I would only say that um I, I hope that we think about um on a upcoming agenda, so it's well in advance, but a little bit about what we're talking about, the logistics of this Fourth of July week. And I know it was in particular pretty taxing for um, for our um police department, just that there are so many events. Part of it is that we are down some, some folks for some of the reasons that we talked about tonight. Um but just in general, you know, maybe a little bit of planning if there are events, obviously the fireworks can't really move. But you know, there are some events that maybe can be moved um, you know, a day or two or a week back. And so I'm, I hope we do a little outreach to the folks that had the events because obviously they're just gonna continue to plan along, plan for next year. So if we think that, that it's something that would benefit the community to shit, try and shift some of those, um you know, both for congestion as well as just public safety and the ability of our, our police department to not sort of be pulled in ten different directions, um I think we need to look at those activities that we had approved that went on and have some conversations with those individuals. Because if we don't do that pretty much right now, folks are setting up material, they're doing um, you know, fundraising, they're doing planning for next year's events. So um if it's a concern that we have, I do think it's something we need to, um and I know it was something that was articulated by our chief as a concern. So we do need to be responsive and, and think about that.
You did remind me that there is an event coming up this Sunday of the triathlon along Surf Drive. And I noticed a sign, and Mr. Sue's already followed up on this, saying the road was closed on Surf Drive for Sunday. And it's not closed, it's just I think a good to get the warning out that it's gonna be busy there. But if anyone's worried that we've closed Surf Drive, uh we have not closed Surf Drive, it will be open, just be careful.
It'll be congested for a couple of hours in the morning.
Seven to eleven in the morning, but.
Yeah, great, good point.
Right, and I thank you uh Selectman Jones for clarifying that, um because the board, of course, did not vote for any road closures. So the police department uh, as Doug and I've uh discussed, um is heavily involved in that activity and will have some temporary detours, but only at those times, a few times when they are needed during that morning event. And uh there is no need for a road closure. We have a uh, you know, out-of-town vendor that took some liberties and uh we're gonna address that with removal of the uh sign that had nothing to do with the town, so uh we'll, we'll take care of that. Madam Chair, could I, just as a follow-up to the comment you just made, thank you. Um where the chief and I'd had some discussions about the, the overwhelming number of events that required police intervention and involvement, particularly on the Fourth of July. Uh and I'm asking if the board would be willing to have us reach out to uh the special event individuals to alert them that uh to the extent possible, we would like to encourage them uh in the future years to uh schedule their events uh other than on the Fourth of July. We're just uh tying up police manpower for things that are not specifically Fourth of July related uh but that could be easily scheduled a week before or a week after, uh without really any loss. Uh would be a huge benefit from a public safety standpoint. Uh I think there's a tendency to, um I think we've all seen it, uh stack activities, thinking that, well, we wanna do what we, we'd like to do because there's gonna be the most people possible in town. Well, um that really compromises public safety throughout the town. And as the uh chief has advised us, um all po- all available police personnel are on duty. There are no leaves available at all to any police officer on the Fourth of July. And uh even with that, um we're overtaxed. Uh and um just scheduling special events that are, uh that can be scheduled at other times would certainly be a big help. So would be agreeable to the board for us to reach out and uh make that uh modest uh request that uh, that be looked at in future years?
Well, I think we'll get to do it twice because we probably just won't be able to approve it when it comes to front of us.
Right, they'll be coming, they'll be coming to the board, you're right.
Yeah, it, it's not really possible for each individual organization to anticipate where everybody else is gonna be doing. So why don't we come up with a suggested schedule of activities, present it to them and say, tell us why this isn't gonna work? And basically come up with a model for how we could kind of spread everybody out and be able to manage things more effectively. Because, you know, how's one group gonna be able to like the, like the triathlon on Sunday? How are they gonna know that something else has been scheduled for that same weekend?
We, we, yeah, we routinely notify those groups. What I'm concerned about are some of the things that require, for instance, roads to be shut down and, and public safety to be compromised and, and police officers that need to be stationed and taken out of uh the ability to respond to events throughout town for two, three, and four-hour blocks at times. That is um very compromising to public safety. And those are the kinds of things that I'm talking about that require the details.
Even so, I mean, why wouldn't the special events group basically say, look, you're gonna have to move here? So they, they can look at the whole, all of the events and say, what makes the most sense in terms of spacing them out?
We're happy to have that dialogue with them, yeah, no problem at all.
If they're willing to make some suggestions, and then as Sue said, obviously they, they run the risk. If, if they can understand that we're really looking to sort of minimize all, you know, stacking of events, they run the risk if they come before the board and ask for July fourth, that's a risk that it may not be approved. So I think if they get both those messages, then, you know, folks who can move the event can do so and they'll have plenty of lead time.
Yep. Well, that's, that's appreciated, thank you.
And any further report, Mr. Sue?
Couple of other uh comments, Madam Chair, I just did wanna echo uh the thanks uh that uh Selectman Patterson and other members of the board have made to the fireworks committee and all those uh town departments and entities that work together uh so collaboratively on uh not only the Fourth of July, but that entire, what really amounted to a four-day weekend uh for many of our visitors. Uh it was uh, came off uh very, very well, given the many challenges that we had. And I thank all of my colleagues for that. Um I also wanted to confirm um to the board and those listening that the inaugural meeting of the Marx Building Advisory Committee um has been posted for seven PM on Wednesday, uh July tenth in the Old Water Room at Town Hall. And having said that, I just wanna note that there was an erroneous uh earlier posting that did not comply with the open meeting law. And we had to sort of gently um uh advise people of that and uh really uh took ownership for scheduling this first meeting to facilitate uh the seven-member committee when all committee members had been officially approved uh by this board. So that will be taking place this Wednesday at the Old Water Room at Town Hall at seven PM. And uh we look forward to uh that unfolding. And also lastly, speaking of parking and challenges, Wednesday is the annual observance of the Art, Downtown Arts and Crafts Festival, uh a time when, as town manager, I know I historically receive a number of complaints from visitors who park in places they shouldn't park, uh are attracted to come into town, which we greatly appreciate. Um but we just run out of places to put automobiles and people. And those who've been on uh downtown during those events, shoulder to shoulder, then assuming good weather, know how uh impactful that can be. So uh certainly a continuing dialogue about, about parking and managing events remains a challenge for us. We look forward to that. Madam Chair, you referred to and expanded discussion of that and we appreciate that opportunity. And um.
It's probably too late to make this request, but um maybe before, you know, in December, talking to the Steamship Authority about whether they can, you, open up their lot, sell for ten dollars, whatever they wanna make, but really make their lot available for the art show day. Say, come park here, walk into town, it's an easy walk.
Mm-hmm.
But they have a huge, huge lot.
Mm-hmm.
That if they wanna do.
Even if they had, even if they had a hundred spots that they left, which is certainly not, I mean, they still have many left, but a hundred spots alleviated from downtown would not be an insignificant thing. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, great idea.
I'm planning to attend the uh Marx Building meeting, so just, in case anybody's wondering.
In case anyone wonders where you are in the tent.
Do we have signage to, to point people for the art sphere to the schools, for example?
We, we do have some signs, some of them are temporary, some of them are permanent, and we'll make certain that those are all in place. Um the, the major challenge we have is that you get one or two cars decide to park illegally.
Yeah.
And then uh the copycat thing takes over, we had that during the fireworks. Folks say, well, I'm gonna park there because I see Johnny or Janie did. And then suddenly you have a whole line of cars in the wrong place and, and we're certainly reluctant to uh send a, a tow truck as a welcome uh to visiting residents, but it really compromises public safety. So uh yeah, they, hopefully the signage people will pay attention and, and cooperate with us.
Is that one of those um events though, that, and again, I know it's a very detailed and police officer-heavy event, but you know, I think of some of the places that are really chronic, like on Cathy Lee Bates Road, um where, you know, they start to park on both sides, right?
Different street as well, yes.
So I don't know if, you know, and it generally tends to happen fairly early in the day because those ones get stacked up. And so i- it may be something worth finding out if there's any way to have a little bit more police presence on those roads during it to just make sure people are redirected elsewhere, I don't know. But I mean, the, the school lots aren't, are hardly ever fully utilized, but.
Yep.
Um those two roads in particular strike me as really, they, they get pretty tight in there.
They do. Thank you.
Thank you, and Peter, did you have?
I do have two quick things, one, just I, I know the board is aware, but for the public, uh that we are advertising for folks interested in, in aquaculture license within Eel Pond as the first three sites piloted for that uh aquaculture initiative. Uh and lastly, um if there is any interest among the board members in looking at the senior center while the walls are still open, um perhaps before your next meeting, if there's interest to have a site visit, um we could arrange that.
That'd be great, it looks really phenomenal from the outside. It's starting to really take kind of that, that shape and that vision, the, all those drawings that we saw for all those months, so.
I'd be interested in a tour.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Great.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would we adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Paul, very nice turn.